All right, it is 1:30. We will go ahead and... Tom is not going to be here because he stayed for the game last night.
He's in mourning.
He's in mourning. He's wearing a black armband. I'm sure Peggy will be here any minute.
Peggy's going to be an hour late, so she won't be here in an hour.
Do you mind leading us?
I would love to. Thank you. Our precious heavenly Father, thank you so much for this day, and thank you for the men and women that have come today to try to embrace the needs and the position of the city on a variety of topics. Lord, please be with each and every one of us and be with each and every family member. Protect us, give us health and happiness. I ask these things in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. And we're going to discuss the strategic planning at City, and I will turn it over to our good friend.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and kick us off. First of all, I want to thank all of you who expressed such a grief for the loss of my father. It was very humbling to have all of you contact me or send something. I really do appreciate that. We wanted to bring Mike back. If you recall, he was back, he was with us in December. At that time, we put together some thoughts, ideas on strategically how do we move forward as an organization. We had indicated to the council that we were going to have a follow-up meeting, a follow-up session rather, so we can flush some of those ideas out, talk about some of those pillars in a bit more detail to see if the council still felt the same way. And this will be a continuation, if you will. I know we only have you guys for about three and a half hours today, but we'll kind of gauge how today goes and then we'll...
He sounded like attorneys I heard him talking.
I think all of you were pleased with the work that you were able to produce last time, so we thought it was important to bring Mike back. So Mike, without further ado, we'll let you get started and kind of give us an update on, rather, some context on where we were and kind of look at us to this point.
Sure. A little PowerPoint that we'll talk about some. Some of this will be some material that we went over before, just by way of review. And then really what we want to try to do today, I think, is, you know, you had, I think it's five pillars that were kind of the main priorities you're thinking about as you're thinking about the future. And what we want to try to do is kind of zero in on a couple of those today. And maybe a way to say it's put a little more meat on the bone, get a little more of your insight on it. And then the others, we may, you know, feel like we need to take a look at another point. But this is a quote, remember that we talked about, I talk about it often because I think this is such an important statement about leadership and your responsibility. It's from Max Dupree, who used to be the CEO of Herman Miller Furniture Company. If you've ever, you know, used on their desk or sat in their chairs for office, then you know that was really top of the line. And the quote is from his book, Leadership is an Art, and he says, "The first task of a leader is to define reality. The last is to say thank you. And in between, he or she becomes a servant and a debtor." And really what we're talking about today mostly is that first part, that thing of saying defining reality. That as leaders, both as management and more so even as council, your task is to say, "All right, here's where we are. And here's where we've got to go." And that's really crucial for you to do because nobody else can legitimately set that vision besides the council. Anybody else that does that is really usurping. If you neglect to do that, then you sort of fail as leadership. Because you've got to say, "Here's where we're going." And management has to be a part of that in the sense that the more information you get from staff that's good and reliable, the better, easier it is to set a good vision. So, but then you have to allow others to do their part, which is about execution. So, we talked about this, and just another way of saying it, that all leadership is based on the foundation of healthy relationships. Doesn't matter if we're talking about a utility billing clerk, the mayor, the manager, everyone in between. At that level, people will work with you and follow you because of how you treat them. And then all things being equal, we like to work with people who treat us with respect and dignity and honor, rather than somebody that doesn't. And, you know, one of the things we say a lot at SGR is honored and not diminished. That's how we all want to feel. That's how every resident in Odessa wants to feel. It's how every employee wants to feel. That's how every colleague on your council wants to feel. Honored and not diminished. And so that's the foundation. The second level is operations. And that level is, you know, people follow you because you know how to do it. You know more about it than they do. You know how to operate the equipment. You know how to operate the procedure. You know how to run the budget process, whatever the case is. And they'll follow you because, okay, I see you know how to do that. But what you have to remember is always, and you have to teach into your culture, is that just because you move into an area of operational leadership, doesn't mean you can abandon relational leadership. And we all know of samples, and when we'll talk about customer service today, I would say nine times out of 10, when customer service tends to collapse, it's because we have someone in an operational level of leadership who is competent technically, but failed kindergarten relationally, right? Everything I need to learn, I learned in kindergarten. They know how to do it. And so they suck the life out of their team, and they are unnecessarily abrupt with external customers. And it just medioc, it just institutionalizes mediocrity. And we see it all the time. So you've got to move past that, have good relational foundation, be good at operations, know how to supervise people, know how to manage people. And then that moves you to the next level, which is systems. And at that level, people will follow you because they trust that you've put into place systems that work, even if you're not there to see to it. And that's a really crucial level of leadership, to be able to say, "It's going to work. I know it's going to work. I can go home and have dinner because I've got people, we've got systems, and they work efficiently and effectively for the good of the whole." So this is now getting into where you a lot are as council and management. You should be spending the bulk of your time, everybody in this room should be spending the bulk of their time in systems leadership, and in the next one we'll talk about in a second, because, you know, you can get down in the nitty-gritty and do it, you know? But if you do that, there's nobody to really work the systems. And then you're making yourself and others unnecessary. So that's a really important, important thing, setting up systems that work, even if you're not there to see to it. And then the highest level is strategic leadership. And strategic leadership, at that level, people will follow you because they trust that you are accurately, to the best you can, accurately interpreting the horizon. Where do we need to be going? Now, you know, you can't be perfect on it. Nobody bats a thousand when it comes to saying that's the direction. But you've got to be right, you've got to be pretty good, you know? And your ability to see it or not see it is really the difference between future success and future failure. And I always think about a couple of cities in the metroplex that really highlight this for me. And if you come from one of these cities, particularly the one I'm going to say is kind of negative, please don't be offended. I'm from Dumas, so there you go, you know? But, you know, Plano and Garland are, were back in the 60s and 70s, early 70s, essentially the same in population and had the same potential for growing. But one of those cities looked out in the future and said, "The growth of Dallas is going to spill out. And when it does, we're going to be ready for it." And that was Plano. And they funded and built, you know, everywhere six-lane boulevards. And people said, "Why in the world do you need six-lane boulevards in a city of 10,000 people?" Garland said, "We don't want all that Dallas traffic coming in here, and we're not going to build that kind of transportation systems." And, you know, if you're driving Garland today, you know why? Plano became Plano, Garland didn't. And largely it was about strategic leadership. Because the big difference between strategic leadership and all the other levels are two things. Number one, all the other levels of leadership are about right now. Strategic leadership is about the future. So that's big, you know, being able to say, "I follow it because I..." It's not just about now. It's about, is there a future? And do I, can I see myself here? Can I see my family here? Lots and lots of places. You know, I was in Cocoa, Florida. And, you know, we think of Cocoa, I think Cocoa Beach, and you think, "Man, that place has just got to be going and growing all the time." And having huge struggles, huge struggles. You know what their big struggle was? Our kids grow up here, they go off and they're never, they never come back because there's nothing left for them to do in Cocoa. I'm like, "Cocoa? You think Cocoa, you think what?" NASA. Yeah, you think space. But they rode that horse into the ground. They'll tell you that. They'll tell you that. They didn't change because they didn't think they ever had to. And time came when NASA didn't pay those bills anymore. So, boy, that's pretty big, isn't it? So you don't want that. The other thing that's different about strategic leadership compared to all the others is culture. Because while you grow leaders from the ground up, you instill culture from the top down. And this is where you, as council, you are primarily responsible for the culture of the organization.
Could you say, repeat that again, Ed?
So you grow leaders from the ground up. So think military. I always say, anytime we're going to do anything with a new leadership emphasis at SGR, my company, the first thing we do, when we're writing new curriculum, the first thing we do is find out what the military has done with this. We'll find something from Air Force, Army, Marines, they, because they are, no kidding, they are the best at growing leaders. Because they have to. They have to grow. You know, you get to a part where you need a lieutenant, you don't just say, "Hey, let's go see if IBM's got a new lieutenant. We can pull over." I mean, they've got to grow them so they know what they're doing. So you grow leaders from the ground up, but you instill culture from the top down. The only way somebody can come into your organization and infiltrate the culture and impact the culture in a negative way is if there's a vacuum of leadership to begin with. Because if somebody comes in, I don't care if you're talking parks and rec, city council, public works, police, fire, name it. If they come in and they've got the wrong attitude, the wrong culture, and you've got good, strong leadership, what does that leadership do? They build a fence around it. They put a boundary and say, "Look, love you." But that's not how we do things here. We've got a culture. These are our values. This is what we're about. But when that, when that leadership is void, nature abhors a vacuum. Then negativity has the opportunity to fill, of wrong values. And we face it all the time. Got to have leaders that step up. It's a great book, great book, that if you love sports anyway, you love it. It's called The Captain Class. It's written by a journalist out of New York. I can't remember right now his name. But what he, is he did research on any, all these team sports that had this great, great winning record. He had to really be good, like Boston Celtics dynasty kind of good, you know? New York Yankees dynasty kind of good, to make his list. And then he did world sports, everything. And what he decided from his research is what made the difference was not the ownership, not the coach, but the captain. The captain. It didn't even have to be the most talented, but they had the ability to pull in the right people and box out, so to speak, the wrong attitudes. And then that's why they were able to win. It's very interesting. So you instill that culture from the top down. And one of the things I always like to say is, we'll talk about here in a little bit, but I want you to see how this kind of flows. This is the loop, the strategic vision loop. And where we're kind of, and it's a loop because it can really start from anywhere. But where we are today is right in here. But let's say we start like what we did in December with the council and visions. So remember, we said, "Okay, where are we going? Where does the city of Odessa need to go over the next 20 years?" And all this talk and discussion about it. And so we're still kind of right here because now staff is planning, but they're also checking back with you to say, "We need some more direction. We need some more guidance. We need some, we need some more input." But at some point in the next little bit, staff's going to create a cohesive, coherent work plan. You're feeding into it. You're talking into it. But ultimately, staff is going to set that plan because they're the experts. They're the professionals in that regard. But you're not without input on it because you're going to come back and you're going to have opportunity to affirm it and say, "Yeah, that's right. You got it." So we always use the really dumb illustration, that maybe you say, "We're going to be, we want to be the Bradford pear capital of the world." I mean, we want Bradford pears everywhere. I don't know why you'd say that, but you know, you did. And so staff goes, "Okay, great. You want Bradford pears everywhere? We're going to plant them in the ballparks. We're going to plant them in, along the median. We're going to put them everywhere." And then they come back and say, "Here's our plan." And you say, "No, no, we didn't mean we don't want to have softball fields anymore. We just wanted them on the median of the main streets." "All right, now we're going to get it." That's why council has to affirm it. At some point, you get agreement. Staff is the one that executes. So, you know, while you have a role, and we'll talk some about that as a council today, what's your role in customer service? What's your role in making decisions with public works and infrastructure? Ultimately, it's got to be your staff executes. And there's a lot of teamwork there. I'm really amazed at how many times when I'm in really good cities, and I've been there, and there's a lot of them, and they're talking about successes, wins and losses, those really great cities, inevitably, the council will say, "Well, it really wasn't us. It was the staff. They did it all." And then the staff will say, "Well, yeah, but if we didn't have the council's guidance, if we didn't have the council's leadership, if the council didn't have strength, we could have never done it." And believe it or not, there's some cities we're in that aren't doing so well. Couple of them have been in the newspaper in Dallas this last week, so you could guess maybe, but we work with them some. We don't put them on our resume though, just... But I'm going to tell you, inevitably, inevitably, you know what? You get council together, "What's the problem?" "Well, we don't have the right leadership. We need to change this department head. We need to change this manager." You know, I mean, city managers are just like revolving doors. In fact, one city we worked with, Ron, my boss, said, "We're not going to do the next search because we can't with integrity put anybody there." But at the same time, the staff has some blame too. So you have to let staff execute, but then council's got a period where they evaluate, call it halftime, you know, checkup for, you know, whatever the court, the case is. But you make some adjustments and say, "Okay, let's evaluate this. What's going well? What's not going well? What have been game changers? What have, you know, been the surprises? And what adjustments do we need to make?" So make those. And then staff adjusts. And I don't want to leave out this, this part of citizen input to the council. I always use this illustration, you know, I travel a lot. And so my wife and I have a pretty firm standing date every Saturday morning. You'd be pretty hard-pressed to get on my calendar for Saturday mornings, or my wife's. Because that's our time where we have some extended three, four hours where we're not worn out chasing dogs or granddaughters, you know? And we catch up. We talk. It's a really special, important time to us. But, you know, I'd be a pretty foolish man if my wife called me and said, "Hey, I need to talk to you about something." And I'd say, "Okay, just talk to me about it Saturday morning. I don't have time to talk to you right now." Not good, right? No, no. Not good. At the same time, it wouldn't be as healthy either if I said, "Yeah, I really want to play golf on Saturday morning." "We talk anytime you want to, Mary Beth. You know, just call me. We'll talk, we'll talk anytime." Yeah, email, text me, man. That wouldn't go too good either, right? So I always say it's the same with citizen input. On the one hand, you need some clear strategies, some set apart time where you're saying to your residents, "Talk to us. We're listening. We're all ears." Whether that's community survey, from time to time, you know, town hall meetings, whatever you want to call them, however you want to do it. But you also need to be constantly listening, right? And you can't say, "Well, I've got one. I don't have the other." So that's all we're talking about, citizen input. All right, so that's kind of the cycle. Thoughts on that? I want to hope that you'll keep working it. Here's what I was going to talk about earlier. Value, "Culture eats strategy for breakfast," is what Drucker said. You can have a great plan, but if you've got a sour culture, nobody wants to drink it. They're not drinking what you're selling. Ultimately, values drive behaviors. You treat someone with respect, you treat someone with dignity, even if you disagree with them because you value civility. You value them as human beings. You value the greater good. If you don't value that, there's not anything we can do that can cause your behavior to be right over the long term. We can get you to act right for a little while, but not right for a long time. Values drive behaviors. Behavior creates culture. You know, you say what you want. I mean, I'm all for it. We do it. You can put it on the wall all over the place, everywhere you want what your value statements are, your core values. But that doesn't really create culture. What really makes the difference is the behaviors. And the best way to tell what those behaviors are when the crisis comes, you know? It's easy, you know, it's easy to manage people, lead people when they're all great, everything's going well, and the economy's good, and, right? It's easy. Not easy, but it's relatively easy. But when things go south and things don't go right, that's when behaviors really, really matter. And they create your culture. And then back to Peter Drucker, culture trumps everything. So anyway, that's kind of the important part here. Let's talk about this part, "Micey leaders." And we'll come back to this and we're going to hit it, but I want you to have this down because we're going to tie this into what we talk about for the day. "Micey leaders" comes from a phrase that I sort of concocted out of the readings of the guys named Kuzis and Posner. Kuzis and Posner are professors in California. They're most famous for their leadership development work. And they've written a lot of books on leadership. The best one is called Leadership Challenge. And it's based on really good research, you know? They've just done great. And they talk about five behaviors, and I've put them in this order because it's easy to teach. And you can call, you can talk about being a micey leader, and everybody goes, "I don't want to be that. I don't know what that is, but I don't want to be it." Yeah, you do. You do. The M stands for model the way. That as leaders, and I'm talking to council and staff, but you've got to model the behavior you want to see reflected in the organization. If you want them to have good work ethic, you've got to have good work ethic. If you want them to give you the benefit of the doubt, you've got to give them the benefit of the doubt. If you want them to be customer service oriented, you've got to be customer service oriented, you know? It's all about model the way. And think, "What's the behavior that I think matters, and how do I reflect it in this moment? What matters now?" There's a coach for this school. I can't remember the name of the school. His name was Holtz, and the school's up in Indiana somewhere. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah! And he talked about the acrostic, "Win." Win. And win was Lou Holtz's acrostic for what's important now. So that's how you got to think about model the way. What's important now? The I stands for inspire a shared vision. And I put the bold in the underline under "shared" because what you want in this vision is for, you know, even what we're talking about with these priorities, your staff and your city have to have buy-in to that, right? I mean, they have to feel like they've got some standard that matters to them. And that's really important. It's just your vision. And it doesn't positively affect them, doesn't positively tie into staff's desire to do something great too. It's not going to go very far. No one is more apathetic than the one in pursuit of another person's vision. Have you ever noticed that? If it's just your vision, it's like, okay, I'll take it or leave it, you know? Pay me enough, maybe I'll do it, you know, but probably you can't pay me enough. But if it's my, if it's our vision, then I'll sacrifice with it, with blood, sweat and tears, because I've got a part of that. So you've got to inspire that. And, you know, part of being inspirational is your behavior as a council, you know? How you act. And so we'll go back to kindergarten again. C is challenge the process. And we're going to do some of that today. Because challenge the process is Kuzis and Posner's way of saying, "You've got to look and say, 'What's kicking us in the shins that we're just accepting as it can't be changed?'" And one thing I thought about with Odessa is, you know, I don't know how much it's changed since December, but with 20% of your workforce, you know, unfilled. I don't know if you're still there, but last time we were there, yeah. How in the world can you, you know, that's, that's a big thing, right? And so maybe at some point, as leadership, you've got to challenge that, the status quo, so to speak, and say, "Well, we've got to do better than that. We can do better than that. Here's how." And that's, that's a really big challenge, but certainly you've got to think through it. Because that's what great leaders do, is they say, they look at what seems impossible and they figure out a way to make it possible. And then the E stands for, the first one, is enable others to act. In other words, you have to do, you have to take the meaningful action that you can take so that the other people can take the meaningful action that they can take. And this is why leadership is so catalytic. Because the people under you, sometimes besides you, cannot act until you have. So an example of that, we'll get into this a little bit later, is you cannot enable staff to act if they're uncertain about what your priorities are. Because everybody's got a limited budget, you know? And so if your priorities may be over here, or they may be over here, or they could be over here, what you do in that is you unknowingly and unwittingly demotivate staff. Because they can't really pull themselves all the way into that, because if they do, you may pull the rug out from under them and say, "Well, that really, I've kind of changed our mind on that." And one of my favorite illustrations of this, I probably shared it in December, was the chicken, the chicken ordinance. Did I tell you all about the chicken ordinance, Ed?
We know about it.
You know, you got your own chicken ordinance, right? But it's just so real, what happened, Malcolm, is that council, in a council retreat, had decided they wanted a chicken ordinance to restrain the number of chickens that you could have in city limits. And that was a big deal, you know? It was part of code enforcement. So staff got all busy, created ordinance, you know, what they wanted. At the second reading, three people in a city of 50,000 showed up to complain that this ordinance was ruining their life and, you know, that kind of thing. And council folded like a house of cards. I mean, three people, they were like, "What we got to do, we got to rethink it," you know? And so I met with the staff the next day in a regularly scheduled workshop meeting, and they were just like, they acted like Texas Tech had lost the national championship. Look at that. Time to break. They weren't acting like Baylor women. That's all I said. And so, you know, that's just an example of their inability to live with their decisions. And so, you know, that's just an example of their inability to live with their decisions. Really uninspired and unenabled staff to act. And then the last one is, you have to encourage the heart. Because you get got, you guys, you get involved with this, you get going with this, and I'm telling you, you get in the middle of it, it feels like a mess. You've got to have a lot of things you want to do with infrastructure. I know you've got a lot of capital improvement projects. And I can also, I know so little about public works, I can write it on a postage stamp, everything I know, and still have room for Moby Dick back there. But I do know this, somewhere in the middle of that thing, your public works department and your city manager and staff, they're going to feel like, "This is just a big fat mess." It's just a mess, and, you know, you've got to encourage each other. Leadership's got to encourage and say, "You know, we're still in this. We're going to do that." That's what you do. That's how you make it happen, because it gets hold. You know, I mentioned Plano earlier. You know, Plano sort of had, about 10 years ago, it seemed not quite the, sort of a renaissance. I mean, it kind of looked like, for a little while, that the sun was setting on the Plano mystique, you know? Frisco's going great guns, and everything's happening, and, you know, had a change in city manager. After a long time, you know, city manager Tom retiring. And, you know, it just kind of seemed like a one goal. Well, then, things kind of started, fell out of the sky, and it, they really had a renaissance. And everybody started talking about Plano again, looking at what Plano's doing, and Toyota coming and all. But we've sat with that staff, you know, and that council, and they've said, "It's just a mess." It's just a big mess. From the outside, this, it looked like, "Man, this is great. This is, you know, Camelot." But in the middle of it, it can feel like a mess. Everything feels like a mess when you're in the middle of it. And you've got to, good leadership pulls back a little bit, is able to encourage your heart. It's an important part of it, for sure. All right, so let's talk. Any questions on that? Any feedback? All right, well, let's kind of review some of what you guys did. We won't review all of that, but I thought it was important to look at these drivers. We asked the question, Malcolm, "What do you want to be known for?" Not really trying to assess where are you, but saying, 20 years from now, what do you want the city of Odessa and the organization of the city of Odessa to be known for? What kind of reputation you want to have? These are the things that you said, and let's just look at it real quick and kind of see where we're at here. Number one, and then these are not ranked, but a place where people want to live because we have a high quality of life. So that's really important. We want to have a reputation, a high quality of life. Organizationally, we want to be servers, service providers who are user-friendly. It's easy to work with us. We want to be known as being progressive, which of course can also have some cutting edge, leading edge. We want to be respected. We want to be respected by our citizens, by other cities, by the region, by other taxing entities. We want to have pride in this city, in ourselves, and in what we do. I thought that was really crucial, you know, really crucial. We want to be known as the cleanest city in Texas and the safest city in Texas. And you're going to have to fight El Paso over that safest city, because, you know, that's a pretty big deal with them. If you've ever been, you know, they are the largest, they are the safest large city in America. And they're proud of that. And it's not a reputation that people really know about. Unless you're there, they'll tell you. Yeah. And then, as a council, this was very kind of unique to the council, that we're the people who cheer, come on in, and lead this city. I'm there, however you could, lead the city. So after a little bit of time to kind of reflect on those, what's your thoughts there? Does that, did we really get it? Do you want to, like, "Ah, this needs some massaging"? Or what do you think? What are your thoughts there?
I still think we're on point with that, especially the first. You know, we want to be a place where people want to live, because it's a high quality of life here. And that's one of the issues that we face because of the need for the infrastructure improvements and upgrades versus parks and recreational type, quality-wise programs. And so, yeah, we want it. We want it all. We don't want a little. We want it all.
And we want it, yeah.
And we want it now.
Well, it's kind of like I told you, we had a long conversation. As far as the first one is concerned, as far as the quality of life, that's the reason why a lot of my constituents, or peer group, let me say that, my peer group, age group, then four or five years, I begged them to come back. They don't want to come back, because they say the quality of life here is horrible, and it's been horrible for a long time. And it doesn't seem like we want to turn over a new leaf. Of course, they speak about the education, educational system. They also speak about traffic, although they live in Houston and Dallas, and I believe that, you know, the traffic is more horrible there. But as far as they are concerned, they see some of the same old stuff that was here when we were kids. And they didn't necessarily know, they saw the dots, but couldn't connect the dots. But now, they're older now, and they can connect those dots, and they just don't want no parts of it. Personally, I would like to build an Odessa that will bring my peer group back, because I know they care about this city, and take their place amongst the city as far as in the leadership and government and things like that. Because I think there's a, and I'm not calling anybody old in here per se. You're the youngest guy here, I'm sure. Oh, no, actually, Paul over there. I think there's a huge falloff in the leadership, you know, when you get in the government, as far as age group is concerned. And I think we need to be fostering the next leaders to take their place in the community. Not necessarily in the government per se, but in the community. And I think by the year, I mean, you said something earlier about a small-town, Coco, Florida. Well, I was one of those kids. I swore I'd never come back to Odessa. And still at times, want to examine myself and say, "Why do I come back to Odessa?" Because it's some of the, still the same stuff. Well, my peer group, that is the same thing with them. They don't want to come back here. They refuse to come back here. And now they're established where they are, and it's going to be very difficult for them to make that, you know, make that transition. So in essence, I guess in short, I would like to see an Odessa that is very inviting for them to come back. And come back and take their place in this community, because they care about this city. We have a lot of memories in this city, you know, from pre-K. I mean, I still see a lot of my friends from pre-K all the way up to 12th grade. And it's a, it's a different type of communication in the street, rather than just a typical person in the street. Rather than hi and bye, it's hugs and, you know, kisses, and, "Hey, man, how's it going?" "How's this person and that person? Hey, you remember one this and that?" And I honestly, for myself, I personally miss that here in Odessa.
That's good. Somebody comment on that. What you in on that?
Well, I think it ties in with what Malcolm says, but it really, to me, the most important thing up there, driver up there, is we have pride in our city, ourselves, and in what we do. Because if that were true, all the rest of that happens. I mean, we'd be safer, we'd be cleaner, we would want to live here more, we would be friendlier. If we had pride in our city, ourselves, and what we do. Because I think, sometimes I think we're our own worst enemy. You know, I hear people say things about, "Oh, I've got to go back to Slow Desa," or "I've got," you know, or whatever. And it's, you can't, you can't fix and grow and be enthused if you're not proud of where you are. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that you don't realize, I mean, we know it can be better, we know it has to be better. But I don't know what it takes for people to have more pride here. Because when you have more pride, I think you're kinder, I think you're just, you're just more open. And so I don't know, but to me, that is, if we can fix that, in my mind, if we can fix that, the rest of them fall in line.
Can I comment on that? As far as from what I can see, I think, again, my peer group does, you know, and I speak for my peer group, because I'm of age now to where it's time for us to take leadership. They do have pride in Odessa, or once upon a time had, in Odessa. But we have nothing to hang that pride on anymore. You know, that thing, back then, of course, was football and mojo and, you know, that type of stuff. We don't even have that anymore. So they want to be, they want to have that pride in their city, but their city doesn't give them anything to necessarily be prideful about anymore. They look at Odessa as a strange place to them now, because there's, by the day, strangers coming into Odessa, flooding Odessa. And these people do not care necessarily about Odessa. They don't take that pride. They don't, you know, they don't even take pride in some of the things they do. They throw trash and run red lights all day long.
Is that kind of the part of the nature of being oilfield?
Yeah.
Transient.
Yeah, these are transient. Some of them don't necessarily have any intentions on remaining here. Some of them do. But then we have to give those people something, as Mr. Dean was saying, something to be prideful about, pride, you know, proud about. And I don't necessarily, I can't put my finger on one thing and says, "Yeah, I'm proud of that about the city." With the exception to the Permian football side of this.
Somebody else. We have somebody else.
I'm sorry.
And I'm very proud of Odessa, and a lot of the people that I know are. But it's, everybody's heard me say it before, but I just think Odessa, and I don't know how we do it, but we don't toot our horn enough. People don't know that we have a lot to be proud of, and because we just be proud and we're okay with it. You know, like El Paso, you said, they, you don't go there and they not tell you, you know? So I don't know how we do it, you know, but that's a part of the culture, is that if we're okay with just knowing it, and I'm proud of it, and I'm okay. But we can't be okay with that. We've got to get it out. You know, we've got to make some noise, we've got to, you know, tell the people what the good things are. And not just, they're not going to read this and say, "Oh, yeah, that's good." You know, they've got to see it. They've got to know it. They've got to, you know, touch and feel it. And we've got to do a good job of putting it out there where they can.
Counselor, if I may.
Yeah.
And obviously, Philip and I are listening very intently, because we want to make sure that we're understanding kind of the goals and objectives. But on some of those things, we already, we're already thinking about what we want to do. So Peggy, you mentioned pride, as did Malcolm. Pride in our city, pride in who we are, pride in what we do. We've talked internally about an Odessa pride campaign. We, quite frankly, we've talked about it for years. But we've taken steps, and we're not finalized that yet. But we think we need some professional marketing help to market ourselves, to market who we are, not just to ourselves, but to those who may come into our community, those who may want to establish a business here. And this would be a kind of an overarching partnership with other folks throughout the city, other governmental agencies. Because I think we all suffer from the same thing, right? Is that we all have this thing that, that we, because I, just like many of you, I grew up here too. And I've been here my entire life, and I remember things being a bit different at one point, and now not as much. But we're also, I think, and a point in our history where we've got just this incredible economic opportunity at our hands, and we need to really kind of take advantage of it. And part of that, when you improve quality of life, I mean, I think as a council, as a manager, me kind of making suggestions to you, is we really got to look at those things that are going to enhance the quality of life, right? Enhance the quality and caliber of construction and development in this community, because that has a lot to do with it. And then there's the other portion of redevelopment, because there's an entire community, an entire city here, frankly, that hasn't necessarily had the benefit of development, that we need to go back into and really begin to identify ways to best address some of those issues in those areas. Again, I think, I would say that your staff is looking at many of these things already. This is going to be helpful for us, because then we want to be able to target specifically what it is that's most important to you guys.
Do you add your head to the meeting?
You know, I want to go back to Malcolm and his statement about Permian and the football team. And, you know, Malcolm, being thing that I think that y'all had, that whole program had, you had stability. You knew that you're going to play football when you went to high school there. You did not have the most talented group in the world. There were talent, but you had "I can do." Paul, I'm going to say something. I want you to listen. We have got to have positive riding in the Old American American. We've got to have that in order for us to succeed. Won't they, Permian succeed? By golly, they talked about it. They emphasized the fact that we're a winning football team, and it didn't make any difference what came up the next year. We need to develop a positive attitude here, and a can-do attitude, and it's got to start with y'all.
Sure. You know.
I think, you know, when you said, "Marketing group to market," you know, to get businesses to, you know, I think, I think we do that. I think you're spot on. I don't think we market to ourselves.
We don't emphasize our successes.
Yeah, well, we just, you know, I, we all know that you could go somewhere and do something in Odessa every single month. You could. There are so many things going on. We have at Wagner Noel, the finest performing arts center between Dallas and El Paso. I mean, it is a jewel. It is something that we could never, ever have ever thought we could do. You know, we've got, we've got that Christmas at McKinney Park. I mean, you know, if we just sit here and start listing, there are things here that are spectacular. And you could always have something to do. So when people say to me, "There is nothing to do here," I'm thinking, "Okay, we're not..." How do we tell these people all the stuff there is to do? Because there's more things to do than there is time to do them. And, you know, I think most assuredly, people in this town are behind sports. That's why I think that whole sports complex thing is something that we really need to look at at some point. Because people, sports, as you pointed out, is a common denominator. I mean, it makes people, no matter what economic structure, no matter what race, no matter what age, everybody can get behind sports.
Yeah, that's true.
But you have stability in sports. It's one of the biggest things that I'm trying to say that Malcolm, you had.
Can I add to that?
You had a Junior Barstow guy that was there for how many years?
Yeah.
Twenty-seven years.
Yeah. Well, same guys I've known since, you know, pre-K, all the way up to high school, with the exception, maybe a handful of them that left. But now you have too many people coming in and out, and that stability does not allow that cohesion.
That's a real challenge, you guys. There's no doubt. You know, a couple of thoughts here, and keep moving us on. Michael, you talked about the marketing campaign, and you mentioned it too, Peggy. You remember the Budweiser Frogs? Budweiser. So a good friend of mine was on that advertising campaign that created the Budweiser Frogs. And later he joined my staff, and he used to tell me, and I've always remembered this, he would say, "Mike, advertising is not for the people who don't already buy your stuff. It's not for the people who aren't in Odessa. It's not for the people who, it's for the people who are. It reminds them they made the right choice." Is that, that's what advertising's all about. I've never forgotten that. See, everybody else, no, they don't even see it. But the people that already have your product, when they see that advertising, go, "Man, I made the right choice."
You know, one of the things, if you look at the history of Odessa, the people that came here and started this town, characteristics incredibly motivated, incredibly independent. Because you were building out in the middle of nowhere, going after oil that was, might be here, might not be here, lived in dugouts. be here, might not be here, lived in dugouts. And that's one of the things I think has hurt us is over the years, is the incredible independence that we have. It made everybody very successful in the projects that they do.
Yeah.
But we have to realize the rest of the state needs to know about us.
Yeah.
And we've always been our little island. We like our little island. People are very friendly, people will help you, you know, people will come in and say, yeah, you know, y'all help us, y'all helped us do this. We're very welcoming, but we have to let the rest of the state know that we are.
That's right. And, and businesses from outside of our state coming in is for sure. So then the other thing I would say is that, you know, part of this pride thing, you, you become what you talk about. Organizations, families, individuals, you become what you talk about. I used to tell groups, if you stand around the break room and you complain about that you're underpaid and underappreciated and undervalued, dead gummit, that's what you're gonna become. You, that's what you'll become. If you stand around and say, well, we're, we are the overcomers. We are the ones that's filed challenges, we get it done with, you know what? That's what you'll become. And that's same, starting with the councils, you, you've got to make sure you are doing that and you are attracting people to yourself that will talk that same way. And build a pipeline. You have to build, you have to build a pipeline of leaders. And I, one reason, we, we maybe talked about this before, you've got partnerships as one of your significant goals, but I would say, building stability in your leadership starts in some ways as a council with how you handle your boards and commissions. And, you know, and I'll give you an example of this. My brother-in-law lives in Mansfield. He's old, much older than you.
Eighteen months.
No, 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 he's, he's, gosh, he's probably sixty-nine or seventy. But about a year ago, somebody on the council asked him if he wanted to be on P and Z. He'd just retired. I'm like, this dude has never had anything to do with government his whole life. He's worked for John Deere, he doesn't know anything about it. He'd tell me he doesn't know anything about it. But he had some time and I think his wife, my sister, wanted him out of the house some, so you know.
Yeah, there's a real story right there.
Yeah, yeah. So he's, he's been on P and Z for a couple of years now and I asked him, we were having lunch the other day, I said, well, so you're gonna, you're gonna run for council? I got tongue in cheek. He's like, well, you know, the same council member that recruited me is trying to get me to do it. I'm thinking, that's a problem. You go back to what you're talking about, I mean, I love my brother-in-law, I've known him since I was, you know, a little kid, but, I mean, you know, come on. You know, there's no, there's no future of where, you understand what I'm saying?
Well, I, 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 I'm afraid to interrupt it, but I, I, I see it as, my peer group are kind of in both worlds. We're young enough to reach the youth and we're old enough to understand the instructions of those who came before us and I just think that's.
Yeah, you're in that sweet spot.
Right.
Yeah. So, so I'm saying to you as a council, you gotta be thinking about who you're reaching out and building there. Because if you just, I mean, I, you know, I'm closer to seventy than I am to, you know, you see what I'm saying? So I think that's a really important thing. One, one more thing I would say about it is, one of the ways that you develop pride is, is to solve the hard problems together. You solve the hard problems. I was in Charlotte a few months ago and Mary Beth and I had some time for the weekend, so we did some touring, went to museum in Charlotte and there's a story I'd never paid any attention to about when President Reagan had visited Charlotte in nineteen eighty, I think it was, maybe it might have been eighty-one, eighty-one or eighty-two. And this article from the newspaper was very critical of President Reagan because when he had gone to speak in front of the people, he had criticized, might taken a stab at the practice of busing that, you know, had been implemented in the early seventies, I guess it was. And he spoke sort of despairingly about it. And the newspaper article was, President, you should have done your research because we didn't want busing, it got imposed on us, but we've been the most successful city in the nation in making it work. And, you know, I didn't know this, I mean, I've never paid any attention to North Carolina, maybe you had, but, you know, they were saying, we took a bad situation and we made it really good and you should have known that when you came and, you know, so that kind of caught my attention. I think what I'm saying to you is you got, you've got some great opportunities, some big problems, transit, you know, kind of thing, but that's the kind of stuff that leadership, you know, can, it gives you space to do something with, you know what I'm saying? To say, okay, there's a hard problem, let's solve it together. That's what, that's what Charlotte did, they took a lot of pride in it. So that's one. The second is this, a few months ago, we get at our company this RFP, request for, um, proposal, yeah, I hate them, for us to do a coaching, help do coaching for some city. And, man, it was extensive. It's the kind of stuff we do, but it's not the kind of stuff that we're really well-equipped to do at a large level. And we were, I mean, it was so good looking, I was, ah, I wanna do that, that'd be so great, but it was so overwhelming, I had to tell our team, we gotta pass on it. But I saved the RFP and we were hiring a guy to come over, come in and to work under me for, for this area. And I gave him a copy of the RFP and I said, Brian, what I want you to do is build us a team that can get that RFP. Now, we can't get this, deadlines come and go. Honestly, SGR made decisions five years ago that said we weren't gonna have a chance to get that one. It's too late. But there'll be another one coming and we're gonna build a team that can get that one. Same for you. See what I'm saying? You gotta look and say, well, we can't get it right now, but down the road, we can. Because five years from now, ten years from now, some of the same problems and different kind of problems are gonna be, and what you wanna do is build an organization that can win that game. Does that make sense? I think that's really the way you build pride, those two things. Take a problem that's hard and solve it and then get your focus on the future and make the future better than what you got now.
It's probably redundant, but I don't know what you said, but how do, because as I see it, again, these problems we're having now are not the first time we've seen these problems. This isn't the first oil boom we've had, yet we still use the same tools, financial tools or ordinances or whatever, as if this is still the nineteen eighties or the nineteen seventies. It's, it's, how do you get a team to see further out that vision and get everyone on board to, at least, because we're not gonna be here, of course. But get us on that path, steer us down that path to that, to that vision.
I, I think the best that I could say on it is you gotta look twenty years down the road and say, what kind of Odessa do we want? And work your way back from there. And say, okay, if we want it to be like that, what do we have to have? And if we want that, what do we have to have? And you're gonna work your way down. You know, I think that's the.
I think, you know, honestly, we have to plan.
Yeah.
Because I mean, you look at the challenges we have right now, none of those are solvable overnight.
That's right.
You're looking at, you know, a hundred million dollars in infrastructure.
Yeah.
You don't have that in the budget this year, you've gotta start looking down there. And that's what we did with the long-range plan, was to look at what the citizens want and start pushing that way because that gives the staff, okay, they approved this, this is what they're looking at, let's start working that and you start eating that elephant one bite at a time as opposed to putting it on the plate and going after it.
Yeah. Yeah, because you've always got that stress point of the now and the, you know, the future. The, the what, what we want now and then what we need long-term and, and if you're always going for the right now, you'll never get to where you wanna go long-term. It takes a lot of political discipline.
Can I add to a little bit of what David's saying? Uh, he said, you know, we're not gonna get it all done overnight, we know that, but this situation wasn't created overnight, just like my district, I use my district. My district didn't look like that overnight. It was years of benign neglect for, by either people here in, in the government and also the community as well. I'll, you know, it, it's two, you know, it's partnership. But how do you prevent that? What parameters or how can you put parameters to make sure this never happens again and that, should it happen again, there's an automatic switch that goes into auto correct to, to, I guess autopilot to make sure that this doesn't happen again?
I, I, I'll throw a thought out and then let counsel respond to it. I, I think some of it's following that strategic, that cycle of strategic vision of looking, planning, having the right people at the table, which means giving everybody a seat at that table, and then executing it, taking time to look at it again, review it, okay? Halftime adjustments, keep on and then getting input, how did this affect us? What's changed? And, and you stay at that. I think that's what I would say. Somebody else wanna weigh in on that?
I like what you said by keeping up. I mean, you know, when we were talking about the long-range plan, they're saying, well, this could be a twenty-year document. No, it can't. Because you don't know what's gonna happen twenty years down.
You have to keep reiterating.
Five-year plan, probably at best.
Yeah.
And you have to come in, remeasure, reevaluate and then move forward from there. I think it's just got to keep a document in front of you that you can trust.
Yeah.
Because people are all gonna change.
Yeah. And, and needs change and economy changes. You know, you're gonna, you know, we, we've used this before, but, but it's been really helpful in a lot of places. Of course, you'll never accuse me of being an artist, but you remember Maslow's hierarchy of needs? And he said, you can't be healthy at the upper level until you're healthy at the bottom level. And, and the first level is basics, which for a city is, you know, well, individual, it's food, clothing, shelter. For a city, it has to do with infrastructure, right? Roads, housing stock, water, wastewater, right? Those are all the basics. And you've gotta have as wide of a foundation as you can possibly have on that to have any hope for future growth. So I think that's one of the reasons addressing infrastructure, one of your top pillars and it should be. And really, it, it always kind of has to be, right? But y'all've gotta put a lot of money into it. And then the next level, Maslow said, was safety. And, you know, if you think about individually, once you have, you know, a job, food, clothing, shelter, the next thing you think most about is, am I safe? Is my family safe? And if, if it's not and you can do something about it, you will do something about it. Sometimes you can't. You just live with it. But you, if you can, you will. And so same way with the city. You think about your infrastructure of roads, housing stock, water, wastewater, waste. The next thing is public safety. That's why you spend more on your budget every year on public safety than any one single item. Because if you didn't, what would happen to people? The, the two things that'll empty a city fastest is if you stop taking care of the water, you know, you have a water crisis or a safety crisis. Then the next level is, you might say, well, this, the, the parallel stops, but I don't think it does. The next level is what Maslow called belonging. And Malcolm, you touched on this, is a sense of, I belong here. I have, I have a group here. I'm, I'm a part. And it's crucial to make people feel like a part. You know, I always say, people start feeling like they belong long before they start feeling like they believe. And if you want people to give all their heart, you gotta make sure they feel like a part. And that they have a seat at the table and they're represented at the table and they belong, that is crucial, a sense of belonging.
But you know, that's exactly right. I look at that and think, two thousand twelve, when Dewey and I came on, water was a huge issue, just come through the drought. San Angelo and Wichita Falls were almost critical where they were gonna collapse. And we don't allow everybody to know, and they say, well, you know, water, water, water. We've got enough water for twenty-five to thirty years, right now.
You're dealing with it.
And we're not letting people know. And then you look at safety, a lot of people don't realize the crime rate has just fallen off, even with the influx of people.
Yeah.
You know, calls for this are down twenty percent. And that's something we've, it is our responsibility to get that message out and say, yeah, crime rate here is at the lowest it's been in twenty years.
Which is why we really need a dynamic public information person.
And that is posted and so we are looking for that person now.
But I mean, if that, that takes those negatives off the table.
It does, yeah.
And then you look at what's left and you take that off the table. And then you can clean the table.
You can take great pride, you know, you can take great pride in your public buildings too, you know? This is something we've kind of lost track of, our public facilities. I heard you talking about your, your arts.
Performing arts.
Performing arts. That's something that you can really celebrate and, and we should, we, we, we need to do that.
Well, I mean, like the stuff Malcolm did with Snyder, doing a big community picnic, you go with the heart of it, take care of it and all of a sudden it's not a problem.
That wasn't my first alternative vote, but.
Yeah, but it was another one.
That was the chief's.
But it worked.
Yeah, it did, it did.
Here's the next level, and again, you guys have been talking about it today, self-esteem. The next level you think about is like, okay, do I feel good about what I'm doing, where I live, in my city? And such a crucial part of that. And what, what, you know, Maslow teaches us about is, you're not gonna have this if you haven't taken care of these things to first. I would say, one of the crises in our nation is people trying to have self-esteem without taking care of basics, safety and belonging and identity. And we turn to, you know, narcotics for that or some, some.
Or Facebook to try to build yourself up with self-esteem.
Yeah, yeah, it is. And, and how can you, you know, but, but the truth is, you, you take care of the basics in life and you take care of others, have a sense of community, you, you'll, you'll feel fine about it.
You know, kind of with what Malcolm was saying, you know, his district, mine and Barry's have suffered over the years. Not that others haven't, but where people don't take pride in their property anymore. And some of that is, of course, the issue with rental, you know, when it's rental property, most people don't. But, but, you know, doing something to, I like the Odessa pride thing, I really do. Because I think if we can get our neighborhoods to start having pride in their neighborhood again, that, that's gonna help ease code enforcement issues and things. But I see it all the time because I grew up here too and I grew up in my district, you did. Mary didn't, but she's pretty darn close. And, but, I mean, we see, you know, those cool neighborhoods that now are just junky, you know? But it's because of a lack of pride.
But there's also, we put in tool with the app to be able to report it to help that, but a lot of people still don't know about it.
No, they don't.
It's supposed to say they don't know.
Exactly.
Goes back to that communication thing. Last thing, we'll take a short break here. The top level we call self-actualization. And, and that's where you feel like, I'm in my wheelhouse. This is what I was meant to do, it's what I'm meant to be, we, we're really achieving it. People, people are whole, we're flourishing, we're helping people move out of, out of suffering into flourishing. And I think, you know, structure-wise, you have to look at those, you know, in those neighborhoods you're talking about, what's the infrastructure like? And, and to go back and not to, to get too carried away with this, but, you know, I hear this in other cities, this rental problem, but, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but you can create systems that address that. You can find a way to create systems and stay out of jail.
We've got a guy that's emailing us trying to.
That, that say, I mean, this is, this is back to being a MICE leader. Challenge the status quo, cha, and I hear this, I'm not picking on it, don't take this wrong. Challenge the status quo, cha, and I hear this, and I'm not picking on it, but I hear this all the time. We can't do anything about it because we have low, we have high rentals, low ownership, and they're, they're absent. So, well, I'm sorry, I don't buy that. You can take some meaningful action, even if you can't do everything you wanna do, you figure out, you know, you, 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 you know, you figure out what you can do. And when you do what you can do, that allows you to do more. So I think that's a great issue to wrestle with. And, um, so with that said, let's take a break. Let's take about a 10-minute break, let's come back at 10 till 3, and let's take on customer service.
Why are you trying to be strong?
I don't know. Let's, let's move ourselves forward a little bit and put up there, these were the, the top pillars or priorities of the vision that you guys selected. And again, these are not ranked, um, but in some ways maybe they are. Update infrastructure, encourage great customer service, support the staff, build partnerships, and promote innovation. And our old deal as a company, when we think about strategic vision is, we, we like these pillar ideas because it's the concept that without one of these, the vision begins to collapse. So, so we try to get it to the point where you say, if you take that away, it's not gonna work. That's, that's what it's about. Not necessarily prioritizing, though, well, certainly you can. And then under each of those pillars, we identified some milestones or mile markers, some organizations call them objectives. I, I like milestones, cause I drive a lot, and I guess maybe I think of it that way, is that these are mile markers or milestones that tell us, we're on the, we're, we're heading in the right direction, at the right speed, to help the vision have the chance to be fulfilled. And so what we wanna do is, for a few minutes, talk about the customer service pillar, and then we're gonna switch gears and talk about infrastructure. And that'll kinda take our time. We really won't have time to get into the, the others. Um, and maybe you can do that from the top. Before we do that, any thoughts on those pillars to those after having some time to reflect and so forth? Do you still feel like, you know, without wordsmithing, these are the ideas that really matter?
I think one of them, and I'm, I don't know, I'm sure it fits in here, but one thing I think we, as a city, have done is not embrace technology.
Mm-hmm.
Um, perfect examples, ticket writers. You know, if you can make an employee, give them a force multiplier, make them more efficient, you know, cause I didn't realize that when an officer writes a ticket, he has to write a ticket, then he has to go over time on the computer to fill out a form, you know, for the legal side. But when we got the ticket writers, that automatically fills out the forms for him. It saves us employees at municipal court, cause it goes straight into the system where it doesn't need somebody to keystroke the tickets. That just makes us more efficient, makes them more efficient. Cause everybody runs a little lean on the staff, and if we can make it more efficient, take out a few steps, I think it makes them, one, feel valued, that we've invested.
Yes.
Uh, you know, cause when we first came on council, they were still using Lotus Notes.
Wow.
Nobody else in the world was using Lotus Notes, but we were. I mean, we've gotta be able to look, to make it more efficient for them, to make it easier on our, on our staff.
Yeah, I think you're right, Mayor. That's it. I think that fits under innovation myself.
Yeah.
Those kinds of things with technology really have to do with embracing technology and, and, and giving the, this is where I think as a council, you play a huge role of having staff's back. Cause anytime there's a change in technology, you gotta learn curve, right?
Right.
And learning curve.
If it's never implemented the way you want it to, it takes a few.
Yeah.
Kicks in the shin.
And, and they're gonna make mistakes and all, and you're gonna hear about it. And if you don't have the back of the staff, and you bringing it up to Michael and Philip, morale just drops, you know? It's just, let's go back to the way I know how to do it.
Yeah.
I'm gonna use a legal pad, know how to do that, you know?
The other thing at this level, the cost of technology is significant.
Yes, that's right.
We deal in millions of dollars when it comes to technology upgrade.
It's significant because there's a lot of units, but technology's the only thing I can think of that gets better and cheaper. I mean, it's, it's a big number because we're so big, but it's not because it's unreasonably high, I don't think, per unit.
Well, I think it saves employees.
Yeah.
And it attracts the right kind of employee. Because, you know, if, you know, if you wanna, do you, you know, do you wanna go to work at a place that is using technology that was on the cutting edge circa 1989?
But if you brought a kid in, you would have to teach them how to use that.
That's right. Or, or you attract to say, hey, I wanna use, I wanna be with a company, an organization that's using not bleeding-edge technology, but cutting-edge technology. Well, we say, local government, nobody wants to be first, but everybody wants to be first to be second. You know?
Good point.
And so you, you wanna, but, but you have to be the ones as keepers of the vision, so to speak, that keep pushing us, saying, yeah, do it, do it, Michael, we've, we've got your back on it, and we'll fund it.
You bring up a good idea, I mean, a good point, that, that I think, we don't, you know, I think the first thing we've got to understand, or I think it's a good thing for this table to understand, and I think you all do, but we wake up every morning with some big hurdles. You know, if, if you look at the fact that when you drive around town and you see a, uh, license plate from every place in the United States, now where else can that happen?
Yeah.
Number two is, the form of, of, of living is, is created in a man camp, which absolutely speaks, not stability, it speaks, we've gone tomorrow.
Mobility.
Yes. Uh, number two, and three, we, we deal with commodity. Our whole.
Economy.
Is based on a, a commodity that can go up and down.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the other thing is that, uh, the, the thing that, that is faced here every day is, is, is that old regime that, that, when is it gonna fall?
Mm-hmm.
You know, in, in 19, excuse me, 1986, I mean, and we've, we've got this embedded.
Yeah.
I mean, there are errors on the back of our, that we have, in 1986, the number one employee in the Midland, no less region, was the FDIC. Michael, in the back of his head, can remember every mobile home.
Yeah, I can.
That was exported over here to the northwest part of town, that were just stacked up. And, and so, and I'm not saying this for any other reason than we've got to recreate the fact that guys, you gotta go spend the money. You've gotta go find the people.
Yeah.
You've got to go do it. And that's where, and I wanna create, fall back to what I was saying, is that we knocked a home run the other day when we were able to find money to do university. I mean, seriously, it was wow. Hallelujah, we're in a position where we could at least fund it. Yeah, we need to look at some things later down the road, but we are there, and, and that's a good job, you know? And, but it was, it was, and that's progress within the city, and that's the things that we've got to build on. Because we face every morning, what's the price of oil today? They got it on this, you know, on a tickler in, in Midland, every time you go by, what's the price of oil today? And, and we've got to offset that, and we've got to know that, we gotta keep going.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we are not gonna expand, and we've got to have this support, go spend the money.
Yeah.
And you know, that means that it's kinda like, you know, it's kinda like generations that were alive during the Great Depression, you know? They never, never wanted to ever, so they were very frugal all their lives. And I know I am an optimistic person, but the oil and gas conditions today are not like 1986. We don't have to have hundred-dollar barrel oil to make money. The technology is so different, the resources are so established. I mean, the, the, I guess the biggest thing that could go wrong with us anymore is if somebody figured out some other way to do what they're doing here somewhere else cheaper. But, I mean, it's not, we are not nearly as sensitive to that. Whenever you have six major oil companies spending millions and millions and millions of dollars at their headquarters in Midland, their long-term plans, it doesn't take, it doesn't take seventy-five-dollar barrel oil for us to do well.
Yeah.
And so we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to forget some of that, we're gonna have to go, we're gonna have to go forward, and as Dewey said, we're gonna have to make, take some chances on some of the, and have a backup plan, because if, if we sit here scared to death, we're just gonna get further and further behind. You know, just like I was talking about this master plan, there's all these things in here about workforce and affordable housing and all these resources, and that's become a huge thing to us. I haven't heard anybody talk about any one of these groups in here. And we said, yeah, but when we did this, then the economy went down, and so we quit worrying about this. Well, that was three years ago. So we can't quit worrying, we have to, we have to have this vision and figure out.
Can't be stupid.
How we pay for it.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I?
Can't, can't lead you.
Well, I was gonna say, as far as, as Dewey was saying, with the license plates, I think we really lose out as far as money is concerned. Uh, cities that I've lived in, um, certain cities require you after X amount of days to actually register your vehicle in the city. Um, and I don't see that here. Also with the oil and gas companies, these oil and gas companies have benefited more from us than we have from them. They leave our city just ruined. And I mean, they disappear overnight. But I, I, I see, uh, it just seems like we're too scared to approach them and demand some accountability for some of the things that they have created.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I don't, you know, I don't know if that's people just fearful, or people have, you know, an interest or, or whatever, but it's like, we're scared to step to them and say, hey, listen, guys, I know Odessa's been wonderful to you, now be wonderful back to Odessa. And it's like, we don't want to go out to these companies and say, hey, these man camps are eyesore to our community. Our goal is to get these people in houses, um, you know, of course, to increase our ad valorem. It would, it, that's the result of it, it, it would increase our ad valorem. But it seems like we're just too soft with them. And, you know, there was somebody that says, oh, they can just easily pack up and go. Well, yeah. Well, then go, because the oil is right here, we know where it's at, this is the honeywell here. And we, we ought to understand that a, as a, you know, as a government, and build some type of plan basically to say, guys, we're not trying to be heavy-handed with you guys, however, the city has needs, and you guys bringing people here puts wear and tear on our infrastructure. Because this has been going on for a long time. This is not our first oil and gas boom, and I'm sure it might not be our last. Uh, of course, it's very unique and different from.
Every one of them, I guess, are a little bit different, right?
Well, this one's because of the fracking.
Fracking is significant.
And so it's done a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, when was the last time you heard the word wildcat?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No such thing these days anymore.
Well, let, let me, let me drive us forward a little bit with customer service, cause about 3:30, I guess, we're gonna try to shift and talk about infrastructure, so I wanna give you some time with this. When you talked about customer service, these are some of the things that you said were, were milestones. Some of these are things that maybe we could dive down a little bit deeper into today. Some of them are things that maybe fit with self-control. One is encouraging excellence with customer service. You're saying to your staff, we want you to excel in customer service, which is a priority to us, how you treat customers. Um, second is create WIGS, that's a, that's an acronym we've taken from Franklin Covey on their book on execution, 40 execution, uh, which stands for wildly important goals. To, to ask staff to create some goals related to customer service that are significant, that will, uh, are catalytic in terms of how they propel you forward. Third, to, to look at ordinances. Oh, I skipped to number two. Be a facilitator, not a roadblock, that's kinda tied to number one in some ways. Find a way to say yes, I think's what, what we've, what we were saying, if possible. Four, gets down to, to your, uh, combined work with staff on this, continue to look at ordinances when considering how to facilitate development. And, you know, development is the big issue, we're gonna talk about that specifically. Development is more for most cities, and I think Odessa's really in this, this is where all the pressure point is with customer service, uh, always. Uh, so, so that's, that's the most, and we'll talk about it in a second. Find ways to use force multipliers, Mayor already talked about some of that. I, I think these next two relate well to you, represent the city well, and continue to improve communications, communications back and forth from staff to council, council to staff, council to community. So those are, those are kinda, um, the big ones. Here's what I wanna ask you about, you kinda think through this. Uh, three questions here. And we're thinking about it generally, we're gonna go into development more specific in a second. How would you rank, just kinda give us a, a, a sound test here, the, the level of customer service right now? If one is low, 10 is high?
The city?
Yeah.
You're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, city. The customer service that your organization, the city, the organization, the city is giving, not, not what, you know, Chicken Express is giving, or what, you know, hotels giving, your organization's city. How would y'all rank that? Where, where do you feel like you're at?
I'm a tough time, because, you know, we're, if I call.
Right.
Well, how you doing, how you doing? And that's, I mean, I'm not, not objective.
Yeah, you're, you're not, you're, you're semi-divine if you're on council.
And, you know, I mean, you hear, you know, at, at our level, we hear good and we hear bad. You know, you'll hear the, where the employee really went out of the way and took care of them, then you also hear the other. And so I'm, for me, it's.
I gotta tell a funny story.
In our alley.
I, I had to rate it good. Get, our trash gets picked up, I turn the faucet on, I get water, you know, they're, it's all, they're wonderful. There's a customer about three houses down from us in the alley, doesn't have a lid on her, well, I know they don't have lid, cause they put brick, they put lumber, they put everything you could think of in there, and so they wrote, no lid on the, on the side of the, I'm sorry.
Brick will take that lid clean off.
So, answering that, I rate us very high, because when I'm looking at our utilities, uh, our, our billing and collection personnel, I mean, I don't hear negative things about their customer service. Um, our waste collection, our water people, men, hands down, those, those folks work hard. Um, our police and fire. Police has changed a lot of their, you know, getting into neighborhood policing and, and really involving themselves in the community more than maybe some previous chiefs have done. Fire department, of course, can't say nothing about it, they walk on water, but.
We have firemen, so the police gonna have someone to look at.
To look up to. That's exactly it. But where, where we seem to lack a little bit, and this is just what I, the feedback I get, is in our plans reviewed, our developers.
Okay.
That they, they get a little heartburn. Now, whether some of that is justified or not, I don't know. Because, I mean, I've dealt with them before, and let me tell you, they're not always justified. But, uh, in getting their plans reviewed, um.
Oh, the plan, I, I'm sorry, okay, now I got you.
Plan, you know, uh, building inspections, you know? Those are the areas that, in, in my opinion, we struggle with a little more.
Okay, alright.
And, uh, the, the others that address the, the bulk of our citizens, I think that were really very good.
See, that's kind of an odd deal, because in the restaurant business, you do, you deal with customer service, but if you're doing it well at the city, they don't have to think about you.
Yes.
You turn the tap waters on, your street's fine, you're, you know, if you call nine-one-one, you're getting PD, you're getting fired, only time they think about you is when they see a pothole or a water leak or...
Right.
You know, it's...
It's an urgent matter.
Yeah, exactly, that's the only time, I mean, if you're doing it right, they shouldn't have to worry about you.
Michael, how many employees do we have?
Total, we've got budgeted about a thousand.
How many, how many vacancies do we have?
The last time I checked, which would have been middle of last week, about a hundred and sixty-eight.
So, we're operating at about eighty percent of capacity.
Yeah.
So, our, our level of current, of customer service can't be as good as it could be, simply because we've got so, we've, we've got holes, you know, we've got people trying to do more than they ever should have to do.
Yeah.
I would tell you, in terms of customer service, I believe, and I, I'm sorry to say this, 'cause I think you're gonna raise your eyebrows, Michael, but I think we're, in terms of customer service and department heads, I think we're in crisis. I think our, I, I think our lack of, of people, heads of departments, and, and deputies underneath them, it's, I, I think that it's, I mean, it's the thing that I anguish the most about the city, is that if you look at each one of these departments, there's huge, huge gaps, and I think, okay, what happens if Tom Kerr has a car wreck tomorrow? We're in trouble. Daryl Wells, he's really unhealthy, what happens when something happens to him? What happens when Cindy, you know, who came back to help out, what if she just says, you know, I'm, I'm not doing this anymore? I mean, I guess if you look down the, you know, if you look at all the departments, it, it really gives me, and so I bet you it gives you some too, you may, but, but those, to me, the staffing and customer service, those go hand in hand, I don't know how you, I think we're, I would be willing to say we are as good as we can be with the level of people we have.
Which creates the, you know, the situation, okay, we've got to find a way to enable our staff to, to get closer to being fully staffed.
Which goes back to, exactly what I said to start out with, is we've got to understand that we do have some risks, we gotta accept those risks, but we've got to do a spot.
I, I kind of, I agree with both, both council members, that there seems to be, at these head departments, what's the word I'm looking for here, people are competent, but then it falls off after that, there's a huge gap. It seems like in certain departments, they want underlings under them instead of someone who makes them better. As you know, a CEO will tell you, he's not the smartest person in the room, his staff is what makes him, you know, so successful, but I don't see that with certain departments, it's more or less people who are, you know, it's a little shaky, the customer service is shaky. Now, as far as the customer service overall with the city, if I have to base it on my experience, but of course, it's kinda like what David said, I'm a city councilman, so therefore, I can get directly through, or I know the right person to contact to get whatever it is that's needed, but if I'm listening to some of the residents that are in my district, I would have to say that the customer service is more or less, more or less like six right now.
And, and I wanted to say, I'm not, I wasn't saying that the department heads only want underlings, that when, I'm saying...
I'm saying that myself.
I know, but I'm saying the fact that there are those gaps create a, I mean, it's, it's not healthy, it creates, we have too many people that, at this point, are indispensable, and no one should ever be indispensable, and so whatever it takes to fill vacancies, we're gonna have to get creative on how we do it, you know, we have to get a housing subsidy free, I mean, whatever, I don't know what it is, but I know that it's critical.
So, yeah, it created a pipeline for that, for sure, we can maybe talk about some of that. Alright, let me move us on, because I want to talk about this, customer service and development. And, you know, you, you mentioned it, you're a planning example, you know, and I think there's always stress with that process, I think always, I'm not a developer, I don't have any background with developers by any means, but I think, not sure, but I think developers all go to a college somewhere in Kansas, where they are taught to stand before P and Z and council and say, you're the hardest city anywhere to work with, right? They teach them that, I think they rehearse it, right? And, and if you don't lower your standards, nobody's gonna wanna build you.
Say, let us sit in next door, so easy.
Or, I live here and I don't wanna work here, I'd rather work in...
Miami.
So, here's what I'd like to...
Sounds like he's been hanging around here.
That's all this is.
Been out here too long.
It's all this is. So, what I'd kinda like to just talk about a little bit is, three thoughts or questions, what are the pain points for you as a council when it comes to this development, you're talking about, you hear from them, or, you know, whatever? What are the pain points for staff with this, and Peggy, you may have already put your finger on it, we're talking about when we're understaffed, and then residents and stakeholders? So, let's, let's just have a little discussion about that, and Michael fill free to weigh in on this one, if that was appropriate.
I just wonder, a young man that we had hired for a while, he was, could write apps, and was very good at doing that, they, they brought up something at that point that said, you know, what if when you check in your plans, an email goes out to the developer that says, we received your plans, and they're in consideration? I think if we had something like that in place, that says when, you know, Mr. Johnson, the inspector, leaves the site, he hits a button and it goes straight to the developer, it says, you've been inspected, this is what's going on, this needs to be fixed, and then when the electrician comes in and drops his plan off, which I, I've heard this before, where he tells the developer, I dropped him off two weeks ago, the city, realistically, he hasn't, he just dropped him off today, but he's covered his rear end.
He's lying.
And if, when we got plans for that, an email went straight to the developer, said, the electrician's turned in your plans at this time, I'm just wondering if that wouldn't stop a lot of it.
I think that's a great idea, because it would also say to people, we're holding ourselves accountable too, we're holding your, you accountable, but we're also holding ourselves accountable.
Because we all know how hard it is to get an electrician, or a plumber, or HVAC, and they're gonna tell us, guy, whatever they can, so they can keep the job.
Yeah.
But you can take that fluff out of it, and that's when the rubber needs to break.
As far as back, Philip and I were just talking about, yes, we, we, that is coming, it's part of our Tyler package.
Alright.
They've got building inspections or code enforcement module, where people can go in, they can submit their plans, there'll be a channeling, if you will, that way the developer, so if he gets this, that call from the electrician that says, hey, I turned it in two weeks ago, the city's holding this up, well, the developer, the owner, will be actually able to just look at it and find out when he submitted it, and what department it's in, it's gonna self-prop the department to say, you've got an inspection you've gotta do, and it won't go away until that thing is done, so certainly, this is something that, again, where we, we can use technology to move things faster, make things better. The only issue, guys, is again, it's gonna be, what is the cost associated with that? And it will be significant for the code enforcement module, and then getting the time and staffing to make sure that we implement it right. Currently, we're going, we're implementing the financial side of Tyler, and we should have probably had this already in place last year, because of shortages, and specifically in the finance department, it's been a little difficult to get there, so that's a struggle for us.
Didn't we drill down to, was that a problem, or was that an excuse on behalf of the electrician? If it's a problem in the city, then we can look at that and say, we need to fix this, and how do we fix it? As opposed to, well, one time ago, a long time ago, it didn't get in, and you drill down to it, and you take care of that problem.
Right.
Takes variables out.
Right, I think that's great, Pam, I think that's, that's a, that's a really good thing.
You know, I think the, and, and you're right, one of our biggest pressure points here in the city is this whole issue as it relates to development, because on one hand, we recognize there's a need to get projects accomplished, because people need housing, people need, they need places to go eat, to go shop, so there's a lot of pressure across the entire board. I know the, the pressure that developers are feeling, because they, I mean, time is money to them, right? And the longer it takes to get a project done, the more expensive it is. For us on the city side, is that there's a, a number of things that we want to ensure, I mean, first and foremost is that we're getting good quality development, and that we help to try and understand, and make the builders and developers understand, that what they develop has impacts beyond today, they have impacts twenty years down the road, right? And when we're looking at things, for example, sizing of roads, that a two-lane road is not gonna cut it, because we can see the development and how that's gonna occur, where it's gonna probably make more sense to have a five-lane road or even a seven-lane road. Yeah, but to them, it's money, right?
And it's now, they're thinking now.
And I think philosophically, the council's gotta look at that from the perspective of, does new development pay for new development, or is that something that we philosophically in the city see, because there's a benefit there that we're gonna be paying for? Because that's the struggle for us as, as, as a staff, when it comes to building inspection. You're right, Peggy, we are, we're, we've got two things, we've got lack of staff, and then we also have just a huge volume of projects coming in, so you don't wanna make a mistake on those things, so we, we wanna make sure that we're diligent in our review, that does create issues. We have literally two-hundred-some-odd inspections every other day, I mean, that's volume that our guys have, are having difficulty to, to get, to get to, and so, again, there's pressures, there's challenges in, in that area, but this is the one area that I will tell you, for the bulk of me and Philip and Cindy, quite frankly, this is something that we deal with on, on a daily basis, is how do we solve this issue? How do we look at it pragmatically from the standpoint, is what makes sense for the city of Odessa, not just for today, because I think that's often been the case, we plan just for today, and really don't think about tomorrow and the impacts that that tomorrow has for this community.
Is there a way, I mean, just, is there a way that we can pay somebody to install it, you know, I mean, if we're talking about the county module, can we bring that company in to get it put in, to make it easier on y'all to speed the process up? I mean, 'cause I know we may have to be using our IT people to, okay, do this, this, but if we can speed the process up, it makes it easier.
That's right.
But I mean, yes, it's more cost.
Yeah.
And I believe that's something we're doing now, we've hired a, a consultant group that's assisting us to go forward with Tyler, it's a group called Coa Hills, and without them, we wouldn't be able to continue the implementation and go live in October as the plan is.
Michael, I think when you said pain points for the other stakeholders, the problem that I hear the most from developers is the inconsistency of our rulings, of our opinions, that things, we change things, we change the rules, and we don't get everybody together to talk about it, and say, okay, here's what we're gonna change, and here's the reasons why. They just, one set of plans, it was okay to do this, and then they came back the next time, it's, no, we got new rules now. Or, we have a new interpretation of the rule, where people say, it doesn't say that in here, no, but that's the way we're interpreting it now. And that is the single most thing that I have heard the most, is that people, developers don't, they say, you know, we've kinda felt like we'll do whatever you want us to do, but we need to know what the rules are.
Uniformity.
Right, and so, I do, I've heard that, and honestly, I've heard that from at least seven or eight different developers have said that to me. And so, I believe that there's, that's either a credible complaint, or else it's just become the popular, popular complaint, that if, but if people that are not even related to one another have this same complaint, and, and I said, you don't get to complain unless you tell me what solutions it would take to fix it, you don't get to just say, I don't like it.
I like that.
And, and almost to a person, they have said, that in Midland, when they change their ordinances or their, that they make it a point to get the developers, the architects, the engineers in the same room, and just like this, whatever we're doing in subdivisions, I mean, there's this whole thing out there of, and they're not gonna like it, kinda thing, well, before we would just send out something that is different, I mean, why wouldn't we get people together and say, here's what we wanna do, and here's why we think we need to do it? And I've, I've even thought, you know, I've had a couple developers that have developed stuff here for thirty or forty years, and they said, we're being penalized because there was a bad contractor out there off of East Ridge, that, you know, we, they, we let him do partial, something partial, and then they went under, and so now everybody's being penalized, and I said, you know, we've been doing things here for forty years, and we got a reputation, and we've never done that, and so, there should be some option, maybe, for people, developers do pre-qualify, and, I mean, somebody that's never done work here should be held to a different standard, they should have to have everything finished before they start, but we have historical developers here, that maybe there is some way that we could speed up for them, because they've got a history with us. I'm, I don't wanna take more time than, but I'm just saying, it, it, the inconsistency and the feeling like, well, there's a little domain up there, and little kingdom, and you've just gotta do it, I mean, that, that's not developer thing, that doesn't make people feel good, that just makes people talk about us all the time, so I think that's an issue.
I, I will tell the council that we, we have embarked on something that I think is a top-to-bottom review of our development process, and Philip will, will kinda tell you a little bit more, but we recognize those things, Peggy, because it is, it always seems like it's us versus them, and it doesn't have to be that, we have to be in partnership with one another, because that's the only way we're gonna get projects done, and I think they want, just like we want, good, quality, successful developments. So, Philip, tell us a little bit, tell the council a little bit about what we're about to do in relation to development.
Sure, so, Mr. Moro, Sammy and I have, have talked to a development consultant, her name is Sylvia Trevinium, she works for Texas Consulting, and she's going to come in and assist us as Mr. Moro said, in our top-to-bottom review of all our development processes. So, she has worked in cities, she's worked in, in the private sector, so she understands both sides of the table, and I think her, her knowledge and her expertise can help us as a city guide, guide us on where we need to be and where we need to improve on, and what we can continue to build on the successes that we, that we do have. The, the amount of development that we have going on, I think any help that we can, we can get right now is definitely, definitely needed, so we hope to have her in, hopefully next week, if not the week after, and she can begin assisting us.
What's the name of the company?
Texas First. Texas First Consulting.
And will she have interaction with developers?
The developers.
That's perfect.
It won't be just us, Peggy, because it won't work if it's just us.
Yeah, that is, that is so, thank you. You know, people wanna be heard.
You know, you know what you're doing, this is just a great example of what we talked about with systems, right? You're creating systems that make things happen, that creates trust, and that's, that's a great example of both the, the idea of how you, how you install some software and, and implement it using outside company.
Where's she based on?
So, she lives in Corpus, she was employed with, with Corpus as their development services manager, and then she was the city manager of Aranza's Pass, and she's now gone into the consulting world.
Aranza's Pass.
Aranza's Pass, it's, it's by Corpus.
About Corpus.
And so now she's very good.
She's, she's at, with Texas First, she's in a consulting role now.
Where, where exactly is she?
Corpus, she's based out of Corpus.
Oh, she's based out of Corpus.
Yes, sir.
I'm really glad to hear that.
We think it's gonna be beneficial, we'll identify those gaps.
One thing I'd, I'd have really recommend is, is somehow we've got to create that communication tool.
Yeah, to let people know you're doing this.
You know what, I, as Peggy said, thank you, Michael, thank you, Philip, thank you, Cindy, we don't get that opportunity, that off to number one, because what we're doing is fighting the day, take this down here, Paul.
I'll stay with you, I'll stay with you.
Actually, I'd like to hear from him, since he's a young guy that's, you're fresh and new in Odessa, how long have you lived in Odessa, Paul?
Uh, a year and a half now.
So, what's your thoughts about it? So what's your thoughts about Odessa? Honestly.
In what sense?
Just in you. As a young person, coming into Odessa, what's your thoughts about Odessa? Pros and cons, there you go.
I like the low traffic.
You like the low traffic?
Low traffic?
Where you come from?
All right, I came here from Dallas and Houston. You know, I wish I, sometimes I have to drive to, like, sometimes I'll drive to Lubbock to go see like independent movies. I wish smaller movies got sent here.
I agree.
Everyone's real friendly for the most part. Neighbor's quiet. I don't know, there's pluses in my system.
I think some of those independent movies will be available at the end of the year.
Oh, I hope so.
Part that really, again, it really bothers me is that we're talking with a group of three people here. We've got 820 people that come to work every day, face the same situation as, man, on high the traffic was, well, we're getting work today. And, you know, it's hard to get the kids to school, and, you know, and we have no way outside of this group here to say, you know, thank you, you know, appreciate all you're doing. Yeah, we're working short staffed. Somebody's picking up the, where somebody else isn't, somebody's picking up a slack there. And so it's got to be some way of, I go back to kudos, it is so important to these people know, man, we thank you. Golly, we couldn't have made it without you. I know there's problems, but you know, it's not your fault, and let's keep looking.
And we do try and do some things with our employees.
So when's our next barbecue?
All right, let me move us on, I want to honor our time. Before we move to infrastructure though, do we need to talk a little bit about philosophy in terms of the tension between the right now and the long term? And kind of hear me, we always say this about servant leadership, because that's what we teach when it comes to how you lead. There's a tension, there's got to be a tension between nurturing healthy relationships and emphasis on excellence and execution. If all you do is emphasize healthy relationships, you die a slow death. Everybody's happy, you're singing kumbaya around a campfire, but you're going to miss out.
Everybody got a blue ribbon.
Yeah. But if all you emphasize is excellence and execution, get it done, get it done, get it done, to the neglect of healthy relationships, you're going to die fast death. Because you may get to the top of the mountain, you probably won't, but you may, but you're going to leave such a wake of human carnage behind you, that's not success either. So healthy leadership is always about the tension, right? Of excellence and execution and nurturing healthy relationships. And it's probably also the same when it comes to the, we need help now versus long term. If all you think about is long term, you may never get there, because, you know. But if all you think about is the right now, then that's not success either. So philosophically, talk a little bit about that and give your way in on this. What's the tension and what's the right approach to that issue for you as a council, where you're at right now?
I think especially the times we're in right now, we're more like firefighters. I talked to the sheriff the other day, and I said, you know, you're really a firefighter, who's under staff, where does he go? Where the troll is. And I know we all deal with it on a, every day, because of the times we live in in our city. They may be used to the speed in Dallas, Houston, all this kind of stuff, but in West Texas, we haven't ever seen anything like this. This is unprecedented. And I think, I appreciate what staff does, I don't want their jobs. I just look at what they have to deal with, but, you know, especially like we brought up with Lions P&amp;Q. They said, this has got to be done now. Just because we can see the numbers that are coming, it's getting bad, this has got to be done right now. I appreciate them saying, hey, we got to do this now. And being able to look at the entire process, because we hear, you need water in this part of town, you need sewer in this part of town, you need roads in this part of town. I appreciate them telling us, hey, this hotspot's coming. And be able to address that.
Yeah, that's foresight they've got to give you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good.
And we've got to be able to, real quickly it seems to me, to get a handle on these things that are coming. You know, I've got a running list. Every time somebody's asking for something, I've got a running list. And then I kind of divided those into needs and wants, and then I, you know, because at some point, we're going to have to say, okay, you guys are going to come up and say, we're going to finance this with this, or we're going to do it this way. It's hard for me to even say, yeah, we can spend this much out of our extra sales tax money to do anything, because I don't really understand that that didn't seem like a whole lot. But there's a whole lot of projects that are two, three, four million dollars. And so at some point in time, if we could sort of wrap those up and, you know, and say, here's all the things that we need, some of them we just got to have, you know. We got to have a fire station, we got to have line P&amp;Q, we got to have, you know, so, I don't know, I think I would feel better.
We're going to talk about that a little bit, right?
They've got a meeting April 23rd, we'll talk about that very top.
Who does?
It's a strategic planning session, and we're going to have parks, utilities, public works, fire, police.
I didn't know I had that meeting.
It's a communication question.
And I think we're talking about this.
It was included in the updated list that I last sent, I don't know what it was.
I don't understand why our organization does not have buy-in from the community. And I'm going to say that on a strategic part, that education got to have this big, Mary, I'm not picking on you, because I'm in, I was in education too. They had this huge deal at Allen Newell for all the public educators, okay? What happened to these people? You know, where is the buy-in from the businesses, the PSBs, the, all these other type of things that, that we just got one little, and I understand education's important, but so is your municipality where you live.
It may come back to what Mary said, that independent spirit in West Texas sort of doesn't ever want to acknowledge, you know. I don't know.
I think it starts with us.
Talk about that.
Well, I think, you know, duty is sponsored, cookout, serve hamburgers, anybody that come out, and I think, at least the council.
I just, the bank would have barbecued.
I think we need to have one in this parking lot, or at Central. Council members, serve, do all that kind of stuff, just to save money.
To your employees.
To our employees.
You know, that's a big part of it, I mean, I, you know, there's no doubt, number one, food speaks volumes. It breaks down barriers, it's the key to everything in so many ways. And then second, just sort of flipping that script, right? And saying, you know, we're the council, but we, we're recognizing your contributions. You matter, you matter to us. It goes back to that belonging part.
And I mean, it's a difference from when we're saying it, then Michael go into a meeting and said, they really do appreciate you. You know, I've been there. And so, but to see us out there, you know, it makes a difference.
It's true.
It's true. For myself, it just comes down to needs and wants. I mean, I kind of liken it to my children, I tell them all the time, if I take it away from you, and it takes away from your quality of life or your health, then of course, that's a need. But, you know, a toy, for instance, is a want. And I think that we need to start focusing on projects that fills needs instead of wants. You know, because we all, I'm sure every last council person has a grocery list of stuff that we would like. However, for the quality, you know, of life for the entire city, we need to stick to the wants.
It goes back to this, you can't start addressing these needs so much if you are, have glaring gaps in your basic needs.
Absolutely.
You just can't, you know, because there will be so much turmoil over this.
Right, exactly.
And I go back, for us to get it better, I go back to the communication thing. Michael does a superb job of every Friday trying to communicate with what's going on. We've got to figure out a different way. I don't want Michael up here at 6:30 doing his communication until it takes away from the family and everybody else. We've got to figure out some way of communicating that gets across to everybody.
All right, well, I think it's time to talk about infrastructure, right? Come on in, come on in. We're going to, we're going to have to pass over some of this. We can make that happen. Council, we talked about this, just to kind of lead us into this, that, you know, you've got two big challenges when you're talking about this kind of development, infrastructure, both. One is CAVEMAN, which is a, you know, tongue-in-cheek acronym for Citizens Against Virtually Everything. Probably got some in Odessa. And then articulate incompetence, who can make doing the wrong thing seem so right. And here's a great quote, progress is nice, but progress, the change, progress is a nice word, but change is its motivator. And change has its enemies. And so you've got to have the political fortitude to be willing to move ahead with things that you know are right, even though you will get some opposition. So CAVEMAN and articulate incompetence tips you to place a greater solution on the problems than on the solutions. To get you to agree on decisions as a group that individually you know are dumb, but don't do that. And then to abandon all beliefs, principles, values, policies, just in search of something that no one believes in, but to which no one objects. Avoiding the very issues that have to be solved merely because you cannot get agreement on the path ahead. Those are things you can't, you can't do. So a few things would say this, that you need to avoid internal squabbles over issues that don't matter. You know, avoid wasting time on the small stuff. If anybody doesn't have time for that, that's Odessa. Fight hard for your issue, but then unify behind the board when the decision's made. Here's a quote, "Never attribute to malice that which is adequately ascribed to stupidity." Most people aren't malicious, some are not, sharpest knife of them.
You don't live in Odessa long enough.
You can disagree with each other or with staff without being disagreeable. Don't be that person. Deal effectively with CAVEMAN rather than catering to and empowering them. One of the, one of the key things I've tried to live by, and I check myself against it every once in a while, it'll make you make some unpopular decisions, but it won't make you make a bad decision, is this little principle right here. Do not reward dysfunctional behavior. Do not reward dysfunctional behavior. You know, one of the hardest things I ever had to do was tell my 17-year-old son, he was going to not get to go to a concert, that all of his friends were going to, because he missed his curfew by 10 minutes. And I don't remember why he missed it, and I didn't even recall that I asked why he missed it. But he missed it, and he didn't have to miss it. And I, you know, and he would later say, that was one of the best things that I did, was, you know, I punished him. I actually went to the concert myself, but he didn't. But it was because I was determined I wasn't going to reward dysfunctional behavior. And so, you know, that's a thing to think about in other arenas, you know, too. So anyway, we go back to that question. What a leader's up. First task of a leader, define reality. Last is say thank you. In between, he, she, the commonest servant and a dinner. So that hopefully kind of leads us into talking about this matter of infrastructure. This is your big, big thing to deal with, right? Right alongside customer service, which I really appreciated your discussion about that with Melvin. Here were some of the things that you said were mile markers that tell you, when we think about updating infrastructure, this is what we have in mind. Follow our long-range plans and stay on schedule. Roadways are crucial. Work with council, this is kind of a directive staff there, work with council to find funding. Continue working to achieve 50-year water supply, how would you say, Mary, you're 30 years?
We're 30 years.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Explore possibility of more amenities through Parks Plan, Water Reclamation Plan, and then continue doing your master plans. So that's what you said in December, and I think what we want to do today, kind of for the rest of our time, is have some discussion about, you know, where we are, where's staff at, how do you prioritize what you're at? So Mike, do you want to weigh in on this, any at this point?
Yeah, council, again, this was, if memory serves me correct, this was something that we spent a lot of time on, we discussed in December. And I think since December, you have seen, we spent a lot of time in discussion with you about the variety and need of just the various types of infrastructure. I've asked Tom and Vanessa to join us, so they can answer any of those questions. But really what this is, and this will be, again, a continued discussion, because on April 23rd, we'll have the same discussion, because our plan at that point is to bring you everybody's kind of list, if you will. Tom's list, the fire chiefs, the police chiefs, and you will have kind of a good idea of what everybody has deemed as priority. I think we've had some discussions with you, both as a group and individually what those things are, but we really need some direction from you guys, because we'll also tell you just how much you can issue debt for. And we've got that number now, so we want to share that with you. Because you'll have to, at that point, make a decision as, what's the best direction for the organization? But back to the topic of infrastructure, as you all know, we've got some significant needs out there as it relates to water and sewer primarily. At the root of that, at the heart of that, is if we don't do some of those projects, and if we don't find the most appropriate way to finance those projects, then our development stops, and particularly to our east side. And we continue to see decline in the infrastructure in our existing areas as well. So again, Tom and Vanessa are here to talk about any specific projects you might want, but really, I think this for us is more about getting to understand what's important for you as it relates to infrastructure.
Where are your priorities as a council with that, is that right?
I appreciate the master plans that Tom and the staff have been doing, because honestly, I'm not in the water business, I'm not in sewer business, and we have no clue what it's going to cost. And be able to look at it and say, okay, to do this, what we need is going to be, and I think that's really a huge tool for council.
I will say that prior to now, we really didn't plan for these sort of projects. We always just kind of figured out, kicked the can, or we dealt with the problem as it came up. Now, through this planning process, we have a much better idea of what to anticipate the next 10, 15 years.
That's great, that's great.
So we have two master plans that are still being worked on, right?
Our water and wastewater master plan should be coming to you very shortly. Our transportation master plan, we're looking for a draft this month, and so probably in the next two months, we should be bringing the final to you, or at least a working discussion on it to get to the final. And the solid waste master plan is just kicking off. We do have a, we do have a rate study that is just kicking off also. But the next master plan that we have, really kind of the last master plan on the list, is a drainage master plan. And we're trying to get that out for our use shortly.
And there's a Parks master plan that's fixing to kick off.
That was not mine.
But it is a master plan.
By the time those are, by the time that wraps up, we'll be doing another comprehensive. By the time that wraps up, we'll be doing another comprehensive.
Yeah, yeah. So, on the, on the infrastructure, something I'm a little confused about, on line P and Q, are those water lines or sewer lines?
Those are sewer lines.
And are there water lines right behind those that we're gonna be dealing with? I keep getting confused.
Now, we need a contract for what we call the northeast and the southwest water systems. The northeast area is served off a pressure plant that's in the north. And so, that, there's a large transmission main that'll come out where we would say hundreds of trees, and then comes down to say Fodry, and an elevated tank, and that, that feeds that northeast area, supplies that northeast area while that development is. Then on the southwest side, going out I-20, we're seeing development along there, and so we're bringing a transmission line down the west loop, and then down that I-20 corridor to start handling developments happening out there.
Okay. Because I know I had down in my notes that there was water and there was sewer, but I was kind of foggy around.
Yeah, so, one of the things, like, if you look at our city, you'll find the water plants way over here, and sewer plants way over here, and there the two should meet, you know, so, but, so you kind of end up serving from option.
I guess it's good that there.
Oh, it's true. I was thinking that maybe.
That's a good thing.
That's not fluffy tech, we didn't.
You know, we've talked to you before about water, specific water and sewer needs, obviously flights P and Q, the north water system, stuff at the water treatment plant. The one thing that, that we really haven't brought to you guys is really what the needs are on our roads, and some of that will be borne out by the mass, the traffic master plan, because that's also looking at our road infrastructure and the condition of that infrastructure. So that's a number to yet to be developed for you as well, but I will tell you, it's gonna be, you could give us half a billion dollars, and I think we'd still need more money.
So, where does all of these, you know, the, the fact that we have these old water lines, and they, and they break all the time, I mean, is there, is the plan on those lines just always, we just fix them when they break and we replace them? I mean, it's a...
There are basically two components in almost any one of these studies that I'm working with. And one is the development, and the development, that's, I try to keep them separated, because it, it gets lost when we do funding. And all of a sudden, we put out a hundred million dollar bond, and I'll use that number to just speak, you know, maybe a hundred million dollar bond. Well, development starts happening, and we start pulling money out of that bond for development. And if we don't try to identify how much of that is needed for rehab, and, and I'll tell you, rehab is way behind the curve in any city. All cities are behind the curve on rehab, because it's been underground, nobody's seen it, nobody's worried about it, but it's all coming to age, and so, we need money that's identified for both. And so, we need money that's identified for that. And our master plan, what does show, water lines that we have identified as our priorities based on their break history and what we're seeing. The best way to fund those, though, is not to say that you are gonna do that one. You say that's a priority, and if we get to it, that's good, but if another one becomes real critical, maybe more critical, we need the flexibility to jump over and do it, but still have that. And the same is true on streets, and that's what will happen with our transportation master plan, that it's going to identify some major upgrades that we're needing to do, say, like university was, or Fodry's one we know that's, that's gonna be a priority. But then there's also always aging streets and the, so, to some degree, it would be good if we can develop a funding basis that understand, we'll never get all the water lines replaced and be a hundred million upgrade on water lines, because the one we replaced this year starts aging now, and there's another one that's aging from ten years ago or whatever. So, so I mix, I mix streets and water lines all the time, but they're, they're similar in those principles. We need an ongoing fund for rehabilitation work, because everything continues to age, and so you kind of need that as an ongoing fund, and then you'll have major projects that may be identified as CIP-type projects also, new developments. That's the way I, I think of it.
Thank you.
The funding will be the real challenge for this council, is how do we, how do we find the money to do the water and sewers, how do we find the money for the roads and the other capital needs? That, frankly, is word awful, because you have some options, and you can issue debt, but that has implications for possibly increases in property tax. You can increase your fees to pay for some of that, that understanding that everybody gets that fee increase. You can consider things like impact fees. So there are a number of different things that we'll visit with you when we get to that, but you'll have some, some idea, and then what we'll be looking towards direction. What, what do you think is best for us to move forward? Because quite frankly, in a lot of these, we can no longer wait, we've got to start there.
So, a certificate of obligation versus a bond, can you, is this appropriate or not appropriate?
Yeah, Cindy will be happy to answer that.
Look at that delegation.
No, she's my expert, that's why.
That's right, that's a good job.
Certificate of obligations, generally, you can just issue as a, at a council directive, okay?
Right.
Bonds typically take a vote, depending on how much the bond is, what it's for.
A vote by the people.
By the people, by the voters. And so, historically, that, I mean, that's not always a great thing in the city of Odessa to try to get passed. So typically, the city of Odessa has taken the road of certificates of obligations. Even in our water and sewer funding, we've gone to certificates of obligation, which really have a tax backing, but it's all paid for, repaid for out-of-water sewer revenues. So that limits some of the restrictions and stuff that get placed on that money, okay? Or money that you have in that operations that you have to set aside to, you know, to have ratios that you would have to meet if you're using bonds. So typically, we use certificates of obligation.
So, on the certificate of obligations, we're not, it doesn't sound like we specifically identified the projects.
Typically, whenever we're going to go into that process, we have a listing of what needs to be done. For instance, when we issued fifty-three million?
Fifty-three, fifty-four.
Back in two thousand thirteen, we split it between parks and public works. So parks had a listing of what they were going to do, public works had a listing of streets that they were gonna do, and they put them in the priority at that time. And those lists are presented to council for the purpose of funding. Typically, you can't, you don't fund their entire list, because they have long lists. They know Cindy, she addresses them all the time, they're a long list, but, so, they start with that. Now, if something becomes critical, this is the reason you don't specifically say, this bond issue is for the Widenew University. You don't want to go that specific, because what if something, a bomb fell and hit other streets, and you needed to use the money there instead? So, you know, you don't get that specific, but it has to be what you're gonna spend it on. Streets, curbs and gutters is generally, park improvements, water sewer line, or water system improvements, you can do that, and be able to do things like, we did the meter project under that, because it's a water system improvement. So we were able to do that, so.
So that's why we're able to move that four-point-seven million out of the last certificate of obligation to Widenew University?
Yes, because it's, it's a, it's general enough, but, you know, this is a thing we deal with all the time, we want to do a master plan. The bonds don't allow for you, it doesn't say to do a study of your infrastructure system, it says you can spend it on improvements, not on a study to do the improvements. So, we're always making that distinction, so there, you know, it, it does have guidelines there.
Yeah, the other thing's important, I think sometimes priorities change for the councils as well, so if you want to allow yourself a little bit of flexibility.
Sure, absolutely.
Mary, you were gonna say something earlier.
No, I just listened.
And one of the things that our financial advisor does, when we talk to y'all about, well, we think we have this much capacity, the, our financial advisor, which is Hill Top Securities, that helps us do all of our issues and refundings that we do, they typically look at a thousand dollars per capita as your, should be about where you should have your outstanding debt, okay? So, we, we looked at that over a year ago, and it looked like it was in the mid-fifties. Well, now with our increased population, that raises your availability, okay? And then we've just made our payment in March first for this fiscal year on our principal, so we've reduced it by that, what is it, four-point-something million dollars. So now, our ability is like at sixty-eight point seven eight, seventy-eight million, so.
Additional or total?
Additional that we can do. Sixty, so our total's at a hundred and twenty-four million, and we're sitting at a balance of fifty-six point one eight million right now.
And that's CO, right?
Yes, and that's just your, that's just your general obligation debt. So that's just what's being paid out of property taxes, okay? Your water and sewer bond and debt is completely different, okay? And there's really no set limits there, it's gotta be based on what you can afford through your water sewer rates, impact, whatever you're gonna use to repay that debt, that's what gears you towards how much you can actually issue.
And in our property tax rate right now, there's what, ten or eleven, what is our debt?
It's down, it's down to point oh nine, I believe. And that's, that's another interesting fact, I'm glad you brought that up. When you talk about rollback rates, your rollback rate is, it, it comes in a total rate, but it's basically based on your maintenance and operation rate, okay? So when they give you, what we currently have, the eight percent increase, it's on your maintenance and operation rate. Your debt service rate is what it takes to cover your debt service. So if you go out and you issue sixty-eight million dollars of COs, you've just increased what your, your debt service rate needs to be. So that doesn't get limited, okay?
It gets added to your M and O rate, and so your tax rate goes up.
Your tax rate goes up, but not necessar, so, okay. And that's my list of on that.
That's the end.
I started talking that foreign language. Like, hmm, hmm, I got it.
All right, other questions from council about, or comments about infrastructure priorities for you?
It's a lot of it. I think we need to also look at what Midland is doing as far as impact fees. I know they're getting ready to pass impact fees, and, so.
Love starting that back fees deal also.
I know Midland's fairly close to issuing, I know, but.
Yeah, I was told that we're waiting to see what we were doing.
I would say, just outside of the financial aspect of it, we need to come up with an austerity plan to enforce the laws on the book, because I've seen plenty of vehicles out there, or, or eighteen-wheelers and whatnot, or, don't look like they're too much in compliance. And I know that we're stretched then, as far as the police department is concerned, but I would, I would say that we, we really need to find some type of austerity plan to really crack down on a lot of things, because as they say, what's the, how's it go, raise a family in Midland, raise hell in Odessa, or something like that? Something like that, somewhere around there. I, I just feel like we really could help our infrastructure if we were to get out there as far as the police department is concerned, and really hone in on a lot of this stuff that we have, really have just let slide.
Because in terms of roadways, they're, they're tearing up your roadways, and not, you're not, you feel like you're not getting enough fee from them.
I know they're doing, in the process, they're rezoning. The changes in zoning is actually gonna be followed by another truck ordinance or revision to be able to, some places they can park right now, they can still park there, but unless it's zoned different, they won't be able to park there. So we had to do the zoning first, then fix that, and then be able to take care of some of the places.
To Councilman Hamilton's point, I think he, the, the other impact, and you hit the nail on the head, is, is the road impact of those heavy vehicles. And I think we also need to engage tech stop, because that's the other thing. There are several, in fact, the majority of our major roadways in our community are not the city of Odessa, but rather, there are tech stops. When you think of Grant Street, Highway three and five, you think of Second Street Business, Business Eighty, Forty-Second Street, that's Highway one ninety-one, and oftentimes, those are the ones that we get the most complaints about, but.
Because citizens don't know.
They don't know, and quite frankly, for them, it doesn't matter, they just have a problem and they want it fixed.
Yeah, sure, sure, that's the, that's the pain point for a resident, is this is a road that I hate to drive on, because it's tearing up my vehicle. And they think, okay, it's city's responsibility, it's natural for them to think that, it's really, it's not issues.
Fodry's tech stop.
Yeah, Fodry's tech stop. I took one.
Because we can build a golden road, but same trucks are gonna run across that golden road, sooner or later, it's not gonna be a golden road.
And then it just adds to, what you're talking about with water, you've always gotta have rehab, same thing with roads, you always gotta have rehab. So, is this a, how are you philosophically about saying development pays for itself as you go along? Have you hit that? If you're willing to hold back on that, or what's your comfort level with that, council?
I got mixed emotions about it, because development really doesn't pay for it, they pass it along to, they pay for it, but then they pass it along in the price of the, of the home.
Of the properties.
And, you know, we're in such a bind for affordable housing, that, you know, that's why I said to Steve on the parks, I agree, those people need parks, and, but are they, do they want it badly enough to pay another twenty-five hundred dollars for their house? You know, to do that? So, I have real mixed emotions about that. That's why I've got parks in our costs, rather than...
Yeah, I appreciate that, I, I don't know where anybody's at.
So are we speaking about the housing, or is this?
Well, in general, they're both commercial and residential.
If the developer pays for those fees to run those lines, well, they're gonna add them in the cost of the property. Or if we say that they need to have a park, they're gonna add that in there, and, and I'm not saying they shouldn't, I'm just saying, it's counterintuitive to trying to get people into affordable housing.
But I, in, just kind of expanding that, what, what Peggy had said is that we're so unique in this area that, and I think we found out when, when Tom was talking about line P, or whatever it was, how many lines, seventy-eight lines? Seventy-eight lines?
Oh, a hundred, yeah.
Little over a hundred, a hundred pipelines that you have to address, somewhere or another, which just throws the cost up here, the same way we have with development. You know, you have easements, you have drill sites, you have pipelines, you have, so it does add to the cost, and I'd rather have the house than I would be incremental cost associated with a park, you know? I, I think then you develop something community-wise, maybe to offset that.
I don't see us requiring developers to build a park, I just don't see how that, it's like Ms. Dean said, it's counterintuitive to, they're in it to make a profit, of course, and they're gonna pass that cost on. So I don't, and then, in addition to that, we have to take care of it, we have to take care of that park, and we're already kind of stretched then, yeah, to do that.
And I don't disagree with that at all, it just goes back then on the other side of that quality of line issues. You know, you, if you're wanting to make this a quality place to live, where you want to live, then you've got to have some of those. then you've got to have some of those things, not only for the aesthetics, you know, I mean, just to make it look prettier, but for children, for, you know, having the walking trails. I always go back to San Jacinto Park, you know, that's my major park, you know, in my district. People use the hound out of that park, you know, once the city went in and paved that walking trail, twelve months out of the year, you have people, granted, in the wintertime, they don't want near as much, but it, it'll be packed. And, uh, and I think neighborhoods do want that, but again, it goes back to, you're gonna have to pay for it, and then we've got to maintain it. But I think we need them.
And I think at some point, if we don't have a different plan, I know what Peggy's saying about, you know, having an alter, Malcolm, I don't know who said it, but having an alternate plan that we'll have something for them to do. But in those new development, you have new families, they're bringing in new babies. And so, I mean, they, they.
Part of it just goes back to, what is the fee that we can charge the developer to finish out the impact fee? Utilities, we don't have to pay for the streets, because that is falling straight back on our shoulders, taxpayers. If they can bear a reasonable part of that, that's gonna free up budget money for other stuff. You know, but relative right now, we do get some gain out of new development, you know, more employees, get a little bit of absorbent tax, but that's not where we make our money, we make our money on sales tax. So that's such a small part, but it's that, you know, if you're gonna buy a new computer, and I'm a retailer, if I charge you a thousand and one dollars, you might not buy it, but at nine ninety-nine, you're still probably in the market. It's finding that point, it's not too much.
Paying point.
Yeah. And that's, that's, and I think impact fees are gonna have to be, I mean, which is looking at the cost we're looking at.
I mean, and you look at quality of life, a park is free, I mean, that's some entertainment that the family who is on low income don't have to pay for. And Odessa parks are full in the summer, and, and in this weather, when it's nice, I mean, round and round, look at it. I know it's a balance, but.
I agree with it, but if you can free up some money that you would be spending on this side,
Right.
for water lines, you know, water and all that. But, you know, it's like you say, the golf course, our golf course does well because you have, like, we're in our fifty days of sunshine.
Probably an infrastructure perspective, one of the things that, is, um, when we look at streets, I'd say streets, and, uh, you look at history, and our tax rates as a whole, in terms of municipal-type tax rates, haven't changed, I would say significantly, right, in terms of, and so, when you look at our age of our infrastructure, and how our infrastructure's been taken care of, when I say that, I mean, all cities. In the nineties, they started identifying that infrastructure was going to be. So you're looking at the tax base to take care of the infrastructure, historically hasn't been what, like, I think we would consider sufficient. Now, I'm not saying, well, we're taxed, people just are taxing you. What I'm saying is, historically, you can look at the streets, and the streets have not been maintained to the levels that you need. And that's why we're running into now, needing large sums of money to just correct what we can to survive. But we have hundreds of miles of ductile iron pipe, cast iron pipe, that pipe is old, okay? And so it's, even if I do it over twenty years, it's a lot of money for you, right? So, what, what I, and.
No, I'm not.
This is me talking about my, my perspective on it. But the history of those things, say if you, when we annex and we build new residential areas, our taxes in the past haven't really covered the maintenance of those roads. We're adding more roads, but we haven't changed our revenue structure.
Well, the values.
I sound like, I sound like a spin guy. I sound like a spin guy, but I'm not, I'm not a spin guy. I'm worried about that long-term use of money, and that's what I want our master plans to do. It's gonna be hard to get it all put together in the end with all of it, but you want to use your money to the maximal effect over the long term. We may not see the benefit of it today, but hopefully ten years from now, the benefits arrive. But, um, but anyway, that, when I look at that tax base, my perspective is that our infrastructure wouldn't be in the shape it was, right, tax rates or rates, if we had our funding in a different way. And it's just that things cost money, they really do, and it's always hard to pay for it.
I heard somebody talk the other day, and they said they, somebody was getting a building built in Midland, and they got their price, and they added twenty-five percent, and they said it was a cost, cause you're building in Midland. So they knew what the contractor was gonna charge them, but then the contractor added twenty-five percent, and they said, shorted the label. Where are you gonna put them, and all that kind of stuff, so I mean, that, that falls right in with the streets, cause.
But, you know, Tom, going back to your revenue source, I had a very wise man tell me one time, that, he was in the beer business, and he said, you know, the greatest thing you can do is raise that price three to four cents a year, instead of twenty-five cents a year. It's never enough, it's always accepted, and if you have something that applies to go the next time.
Very much, you're right.
We have not done that, we have not done that.
For me, I, I just wanna say one thing about that, just another, about the quality of life is, because that is so important, and that's so important to all of us. But I would tell you that if we could build nice, affordable housing that young families can get into, instead of where they're having to live now, even if it didn't have a park, I believe we've improved their quality of life tenfold. So, I mean, quality of what life, what does that exactly mean? It means a family in a, in a new, safe enclosure that, you know, so maybe they don't have a park, but if we don't afford, if we don't char, if the price doesn't keep them from getting in the home, I guess that's why my concern is that those things, those fees, I think we're just kidding ourselves if we think they don't go into the cost of the house. And that just goes across, against those people improving their quality of life by having a home.
So you're back, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing, but, but you're back to talking about this issue right there.
Basics.
But it's also kind of a yes and, not a yes but, but sort of a yes and. Cause you're saying for now, this is what we gotta do. And kind of what you're saying, Tom, is, and, if we're ever gonna move beyond this, we have to have some plan, small as it may be, one cent, two cent, whatever, for the future, that doesn't make this impossible.
Yeah, because I don't just see that home as basics, I see it as providing safety. They now have a place where they belong, a little community, they feel better because they're not living in their car, or in an apartment, or in a friend's house. So to me, that's like a foundation, that's why I think we're all so concerned about housing. That does more to climb up that ladder than anything else.
No, I don't disagree.
One of the difficulties too seems to be, cause I know we do get asked about our fees and things like that, and, um, we, we'd love for them to be less, um, but they are, say, a cost. Say like when we contracted taps, a tap does cost us forty-two hundred dollars a tap. We can't just make it disappear, it, it costs us that much to do it. It's, somebody's gonna have to make it. So when we talk about trying to lower those housing costs, and again, this is just me talking right up there, but I'm not sure how we find that, what, what cost goes away? Most of our fees are based on some expense, something that we're doing, something that has to be done. So what cost goes away, if we just distribute it somewhere else?
Well, but, but for a cost to go from a thousand to forty-two hundred dollars, I mean, that's with that contractor. I mean, I don't know what the answer is, but man, I know for forty-two hundred dollars a tap, you could probably get outside people maybe, but I, I don't know what the answer is. And I know that we, our costs also add into, you know, this whole development.
Can I throw a suggestion down there, and appreciate you bringing that up, Tom, and something we've talked about, Michael, now that we're here. Where we provide the service mowing the lawn, can we put a lien on it?
On our vacant.
And we started putting liens on those vacant lots.
Well, we, we historically, so what Dewey's referring to is that, as you know, we've got a number of vacant lots that is throughout this community.
And drill sites.
Yeah, and drill sites, and for a number of years, there was a lot of effort and time spent by the city of Odessa to find the owner, um, send the owner a bill, try and collect that bill. I would say at around two thousand, two thousand and two, the council and the manager at the time decided, we're not getting anywhere because we, we can't move them through the court system fast enough. Uh, they're, you know, they're not responsive, and yet we still have citizens who have planted those high weeds all the time. So, uh, the decision was made back then to just, just as a, as a matter, as a policy, to go in and mow those lawns. And so we have historically done that at no cost to the property owner, the drill site company owner. And so what we are now exploring is that we need to go back and maybe start charging them, because given today's issue as it relates to housing, maybe that compels someone to sell that lot, as opposed to just keep it. Maybe it compels that drill site company, hey, maybe we just need to abandon this, cause it's nothing but a, but a nightmare for us.
So that lowers the cost, which is what you're referring to, Tom, you know, and.
I forgot what councilperson was, I forgot who it was, but said something more or less like, I don't think the people necessarily mind raising taxes. They wanna know what they're getting for, was that, yeah, they wanna know what they're getting for it. And I think that, um, maybe that's an option we need to explore.
That's that communication.
Yeah, it goes back to communication.
It goes back to communication.
If they know how for spending their money.
You know, we, we've heard a number of things to date that have been resolved, and things that we've heard from, from, uh, complaining citizens that you are in the midst of doing, which we know you are, but it's just nice to hear that it is being done.
Dollar figures we deal with are not dollar figures that people understand well easily. When you're talking about needing to spend tens of million dollars to fix a plant up, or something like that, that's not something we normally would figure we would use at home. Uh, or a dollar, it is just a huge sounding number. But when you consider that that number is divided by a hundred and twenty-five thousand people, or something like that, I'm not trying to minimize it, but I'm just trying to put it in perspective, that, that sometimes it's hard for people to accept what we're doing based on the sounds of the numbers that we have.
The only thing about it now though, is that everybody, every person that lives here has, has now been affected by higher prices of everything. And so I think it might, it may sound crazy, but I think it's kind of a good time to start educating people because they get it, I mean, they're paying more, they, everything costs more, it's not something we can do anything about. But they know that now, because it's not just the city wanting to do something here, it's, they recognize it. Every time they go to the store, every time they do anything, so. This, this environment may be a good time to be communicating with people about what things cost, because they're acutely aware that things cost a lot.
But I think we also need to educate them and say, as a city, we have chosen to give you twenty percent off your taxes for an electricity exemption. If you're over sixty-five, you get this, and just to let them know that, hey, this is something we did, our predecessors did, and it's a benefit for living here, it's not a lot of them realize it.
I think also, one of the things you have to keep in mind is that, that very difficult struggle of thinking twenty years from now, what do you want Odessa to be? And thinking about it in terms of infrastructure too, and communicating that, you know, of like, you may not be able to put everything you want to toward it, but if you think twenty years from now, I mean, if you had the magic wand, where would you want the people that sit around this table twenty years from now to be? Do you want them still to be discussing, we have no way to take care of our infrastructure? Or do you want them to be able to say, okay, we got this because there was good foresight in, in, you know? That's, that's the tough thing, and you won't get necessarily kudos for it, but you have to communicate it. That's where, it's just like what you do for your kids, when you're saying, we're gonna put aside money for your education, so, you know, they'd rather go to Dairy Queen and get an ice cream.
How, how, how do we, how do we battle inflation? Because that's the big killer here, that's that third, you know, that's that silent tax. That's that silent tax that's really sucking everybody dry here.
Yeah.
It's just inflation, how do we curb that, how do we battle that?
Yeah, I don't really, that's a tough, that's a tough issue. Bikers kind of.
Well, yeah.
You, you, you don't.
You don't?
Yeah, it's just a part of the, part of the reality side of it.
Michael, you guys say something?
No, I, I, I wanna tell the council from a staff's perspective, we, the dilemma that you guys are in, because, you know, we struggle with, how are we gonna fund the projects? Uh, and, uh, again, what we want to prepare to you, prepare for you is a list of different options. Some of them you'll like, some of them you won't like, um, some of them have impacts, some of them have minimal impacts. Uh, there are things out there that, that other communities are doing, for example, some communities now are tackling the roadway issue by having a, a roadway maintenance fee attached to every water bill. That's one way to do it, it's, it's not popular, but it's a way to do it. Some communities balance traditional methods of, of, of funding projects by certificates of an obligation with a bond. So, I mean, to your, to your, and Mr. Hamilton's point, if citizens don't mind, as long as they know, one good example, and if you haven't been to El Paso lately, it's, it's probably a good time to go, they issued a, a few years ago, a quality of life bond, and they tackled these very topics, right? Parks, amenities that would bring people into downtown, and that's been hugely successful for that community. So there, there are other opportunities and options out for you, out for you to consider. And again, we will, we will try and compile those and bring those, so you can at least have some idea of what you could do.
Yeah, that, the bond election, it's a really difficult one. But, but, you know, it can also, um, see, I can say this, cause I'm a consultant, I don't live here. No, I'm not in West Texas, I'm in the Panhandle. But, you know, when you think about pride, and Odessa pride, it, it, it's an opportunity to tap into that when the timing's right. Because, hey, this is our city, and we're doing this. And you, you know, the key is, you gotta get more people involved in the, on the bond committee than it takes to win the election. That's, that's really the, the secret to that. You get more people involved in that committee, and subcommittees, and blah, 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 than it will take to win it.
I think you look at Odessa College, what that bond did for OC. Yes, I mean, you know, to win, what, fourth in the nation as far as junior college? That's, I mean, that's a lot of work, but, I don't know one year, but facilities are, look what it did in that part of town, I mean, it just.
So there, there can be a sense of confluence, you know, confluence there of pride and solving problems. With the time to try. Looking up at our list, anything else that, before we start wrapping this up, uh, that council, you wanna ask staff about, weigh in on? Uh, we've talked quite a bit about the long-range plans and, or the master plans, I mean, we've talked quite a bit about roadways. Anything more to say about water, water supply, or water reclamation plan? Or anything else we need to add up there that we, we've not identified yet, that it's in your mind it needs to be?
And Tom, you're still working on the RO thing, you said you were working with someone?
We've got the RFP out right now on the, uh, sale of the Brian off the, off the RO, and so we should know how marketable that is before too long.
That's a great way of using non-traditional funding to pay for it.
Well, I saw where Pioneer was laying off all those firing, all those people and downsizing, and I went.
No, I think.
But they said, they said.
Nothing to do with our money.
Well, no, I mean, they said that they're just gonna become Permian-only, Permian-based and all that, some other places. But I read that paper, like.
Fortunately, what we do have is take a pay.
It's locked. Anything else up there that we?
Um, do you know any tourist attraction that really stands out? I know we have, no, Hal, I know you, I know you're sitting there, like, Hal, you're doing a great job, by the way, I'm, I'm sorry. You're doing a great job, um, but I think we just need more, I think we need more arts. I think we need something that, uh, is a signature piece for, yeah, for Odessa, and we don't necessarily. And we don't necessarily have that per se.
You know, Malcolm, I appreciate what you're saying. And I think one thing that's going to change all of that tonight will be just, is your downtown Odessa is going to be an attraction. I mean, I wish you continued to see the pictures of that motel.
Hotel.
Excuse me.
That's a high dollar motel.
But, I won't bore you with that. But the amenities that are being put in there are just absolutely phenomenal. And they're going to draw people. It will draw people.
I talked to a few people who went, oh my God, I wouldn't.
I think your attractors are going to draw people. I think that, you know, we can get, you know, Mick Jagger after he has his heart attack to come out here, or heart surgery, yeah.
Give him a stem.
Yeah. Valve, just a little valve.
Well, and the greatest thing about those dollars, those tax dollars, is that a good part of those tax dollars, we get to use on quality, on improving.
Quality of life.
Quality of life.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, this hotel motel, you know, including tourism, but.
And I think we're getting a lot of feedback from good things that's going to happen downtown.
Yeah, including tortures.
Yeah.
Well, Malcolm, anything you, also.
Well, it's not part of when you think of infrastructure, but, but it really is. So other things on our plate are the, obviously the fire stations, we kind of touched on that. Animal control, that's, that's a pending concern for you guys. There's some police needs. We'll be bringing those to you on the 20th Thursday, we can have a more protracted discussion on those.
Yeah.
What time is that?
1:30.
1:30?
Wasn't it, I thought it was 3:30. I have 3:30 here.
Do you remember?
Sorry, I think it's 3:30. 3:30.
I'll be at 1:30 if we talk to you.
So let me, I want to kind of wrap it up, give you a chance to talk about takeaways. And I, I want to share just a, just a quick thought. I don't know if you've read this book, it's, it's a great little book called Culture Code. And in it, talks about a practice that the Oklahoma City Thunder basketball team has that I've just been struck by. That no matter what position you take for that organization, whether you're an administrative assistant, a player, maintenance, anywhere, any, any person play that works for that organization, as a part of your onboard experience, they take them to the memorial, the bombing memorial there in Oklahoma City. And they, they tour together. And it's usually the general manager of the Thunder that leads the tour. And following that tour, they gather those new employees together, whether you're a player or, or someone behind the scenes. And they say to them, don't forget that whenever we play a whole game, there are people in those stands that lost a son or a daughter, or a mom, or a dad, or a brother, or a neighbor. And they're still living with it, you know? And what we do as an organization, they say, is we provide a little bit of break from an otherwise, sometimes grim reality. That's what we do. I don't know, really, like, well, that's, uh, fire, you know? But that, you know, as, as good as that is, you know what? That's really just entertainment. If you think about what you guys do, both staff and elected officials, your everyday work is providing a life where we can drive on roads, even though they're not always as good as we want. Where we can turn the water on and not worry about we're going to get poisoned from it. Where we can flush our toilets and not think about it, et cetera, et cetera. And that's the difference you're making.
Paul, did you get that?
And, I know, I've never been close to talking to people. Hey, I know you don't always get, you know, recognition for that, but I want you to know you're making a difference. And from our part, as a, as a leadership development company, we're, we're proud to be in your corner. We're, we're proud to be partners with you and helping you be even more successful. So in the midst of lots and lots of hard decisions you've got to make, and some of which are not always appreciated by people that don't look into it very deeply, keep in mind you're making a big difference. So that, that's why I want to say, I want to give you a chance to kind of talk about takeaways. So we'll let the mayor go last, he can adjourn us, but who wants to start? Take, what's your takeaway from our discussion today?
Mayor Brian.
Thank you, Dewey. I appreciate you recommending.
Back to help out. I think, I think one thing that, that, that we all need to remember is we have some insurmountable challenges that we face each and every day that are, that are somewhat unique. I think that we need to continue to offer kudos to each other, as well as to our staff, as well as to the staff's staffs. Speaking of Lou Holtz, I'll share this story that he told one time about, a couple had driven off the ravine, and the truck was in the ravine down there. A farmer comes by with a donkey. And nowhere else could they get any type of transportation or anything else to help pull them out. That was the only thing available was the farmer and the donkey there. Taking this down fault. And his, his comment was, well, you know, surely this donkey can help us get this car out of the ravine. The farmer says, well, you know, I don't really know. I don't think he can do that. Well, you think it's worth a try? And he said, well, let's give it a try. So they put the rope down, tied it to the, to the vehicle, tied it around the donkey and the donkey's name was Jeremiah. And as they got started, he said, pull James, pull Jason, pull George, pull Jeremiah. And they pulled it out. And the individual said after, the poor guy had been on the ravine, he says, why did you mention that thing? And then, you know, Jeremiah was the only one pulling. He said, well, he's blind. If he knew he was doing this, if he knew he was doing this by himself, he would have never done it. And I think we all together need to remember, it takes all of us doing it together to move on.
Yeah, do you want to go to your right or your left skipping the mayor?
I don't see no, who mayor?
I have, you know.
How do you follow them?
I, I, I just think we have a, we have a lot of issues, but we also have a huge opportunity. And I, I would like to, the end result of this, I would like for us to say we did something special and huge, something never done before, something pioneering, you know, and that we can hang our hats on and, and enjoy it as retired individuals, you know, if we ever were to retire. Yeah, so that's my conclusion.
All right, very good. Thanks.
Well, I, I think we, it's sort of up to us to epitomize this Odessa pride thing. You know, I, I hadn't really thought through that before, but, you know, I do believe that we're in a position of influence. And so we have an opportunity every day, everyone we talk to, to start this movement, this Odessa pride. And I appreciate you and this process for reminding us that, you know, a whole lot of times, it's the little things that make the biggest, you know, it's the grassroots. You look at all of this and it's so daunting and you think, man, how can we do this? But I think it's really impactful to be reminded that there's a lot of things we can do every day if we just keep them in our mind. So I appreciate that very much.
Thanks, good, very good.
I think the whole process has been good for all of us. I think when we started the process, we were at a point that we needed to, to be one, to, to get on the same page. And I think we're very much headed in that direction. Not that we all agree on everything, but I think we are learning to agree, you know? I hope that what we're doing releases some of the stress from Michael and his group because they kudos y'all, absolutely are. And our hats are off to y'all. I, I still say we, we need to promote Odessa. We need to make sure that if the paper's not telling it, we're telling it 10 times more and better than they could anyway. You know, don't, don't depend on the news media. And I know we have a lot to do, but I believe this group can do it. We will get it done.
Yeah, that's good. You know, so much of what we talk about, you, you have to empower people that are already your fans to go out there and represent you. If you're, you know, that, that's the biggest key. How do you empower the people that are already your fans to be raving fans for you? That, that's always a challenge. So, all right, good. Deidre?
Mine is, you know, of course, everything that's been said, you know, I totally agree with. And mine is that continued building of the communication field, simply because I think our, our group as a council has bonded well and we have good communication between us and with staff. And with that being said, you know, it's kind of one of those things, how important and, and to be reminded of how important everyone is. Because kind of at the end of the day, if we all fell off the face of the earth, Michael and his crew will be just fine. They're fine. If Michael and his crew, they fall off the face of the earth, utilities, they can rock along, you know? But we need each other to make it even stronger. And so we need to continue to empower that and express our appreciation, not only to the members of the council, obviously, but to our staff and their staff, just how critical everyone is.
Yeah, that's good. It's very good. Uh, Michael, anything you want to add, closing for the mayor?
Yes, I think, I think this has been incredibly helpful for staff because we know that the longer we go and work together as a group, the better I think we all understand you and what it is that you want and what is important to you. Going through this sort of process allows us to key on those things that are most important to you. And we've all, Philip, myself and Cindy have sat here where we hear what you're saying, we're going to work on those things that we've identified today. I will tell you that you, you do have a great group of working folks in this, this organization. We are far from perfect folks. We're going to make mistakes. But the hope is and the plan is that we learn from those mistakes and we do better the next time around. We are working with our management group, Peggy, to make sure that we are giving them the right sort of training as it relates to customer service. We recently had a customer service training just for all of our managers. It was a hundred and some odd folks that we had in there. We brought back, we brought in Timothy McNeil, I think you may know Timothy, but Reverend McNeil, I don't know if y'all remember Reverend McNeil, but it's his son, who does leadership training as well. And he brought on just a fantastic event for us. So we're going to continue that. We're going to make sure that that filters down to our first line folks as well because they're the ones who make the first contact with the staff. But again, this has been incredibly helpful for us. It's certainly given us some things that we can focus on and we will, we'll continue to do what needs to be done to keep the city moving. So thank you for your support.
All right, mayor, where are you? Takeaways and anything you want to say?
Well, I just want to thank everyone for being here. Thank you for your leadership in your, in this. You know, I think the reason we all serve is because we have a servant's heart. And when you walk out of that council member, if somebody else is setting your place, what do you want to look back and say? You know, and bring it kind of, the home, for me, want to be able to walk out and say the city's better because we were in those chairs. You know, and Teddy Roosevelt is one of my heroes and he has a saying that says, do what you can, do what you have where you are. And I think that's what we're doing now. We realize we're an unprecedented times. No other councils had to face the things that we are facing. And it's a great problem, but it's also a great opportunity. And we are seeing so many good things in the city, we have to tell the story. We can't rely on people to say word of mouth anymore. We need that direction. You know, I'm very humbled to be able to serve with you. I think we have fantastic staff. They need our pats on the back as much as we can because they're the ones in the trenches. You know, we're the generals in the back of the, back of the theater. But thank y'all and we are adjourned. We will kick back off in 17 minutes.